Well, this is a well behaved crowd. They all quieted down before I had to swing that hammer. All right. Welcome to the June 20th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and any other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on any item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to the commission manager, Holly Hennies, located at the lower right side of the dais. At this point, we're going to call the meeting to order, and I will have Mr. Travis Laster do the moment of silence of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So please join me.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or any changes that need to be made from the public and from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval of the agenda.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Hancock, second by Laster. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agendas, first, if you are a new employee, they already all leave? They did. So I had an earlier meeting, but from 8:30 to 9:00, we had a recognition of the new employees to Pennington County here. And to meet and greet with the commission, we do that probably about quarterly or every six months to meet with our new employees and just get to know them and welcome them to the county. Is there any comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskneck.
I got to meet most of them, but probably not all of them. But the ones that are here, I just want to say thank you for picking Pennington County as your future employment. And we welcome you aboard, and feel free to reach out to the commissioners if you have any questions going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Roskneck. We welcome them also. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. And I will recognize Holly Hennies, our commission manager.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items are being removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 6, 2023. Number seven is to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale malt beverages and South Dakota farm wine licenses for Bear Country USA under Bear Country USA, Moonshine Gulch LLC under Moonshine Gulch LLC, and Prairie Berry Winery Minor Brewing Company under Prairie Berry LLC, and Summer Creek Inn under Summer Creek Inn LLC, and to release the licenses upon payment of appropriate property taxes. Number eight is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle, a place for Meow Rescue Corporation. Number nine is to authorize an additional $800 for a total of $114,860 to Boyer Ford in Sioux Falls, South Dakota for the purchase and delivery of two new 2023 Ford F-550 pickups off of the state of South Dakota bid contract number 17616. And finally, number 10 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of May, 2023.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any member of the public who wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would go to the commission. Is there any commissioner who'd like any item removed?
Number 10, please.
Number 10 from Ms. Hancock. Any other one from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval for items 6 through 9.
Still moved.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Roskneck. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to item number 10, and this is to recognize and thank volunteers for the month of May, 2023, HR and Fire Administration. I'll turn it over to Ms. Hancock.
Again, I'd like to thank the volunteers for the month. We have volunteers from Extension, Sheriff's Office, Treasure, and the volunteer fire departments from Box Elder, Doty, Hill City, Johnson Siding, New Underwood, North Haynes, Quinn, Rabbit Valley, Rogers, Scenic, Rockerville, Silver City Wall, Wasta, Whispering Pines, and just Pennington County Fire in general. Takes a lot of work and takes a lot of time to volunteer. So we appreciate anybody who spends their time and energy on Pennington County, and we always like more team members. So we appreciate everybody that helps us out and makes a difference in Pennington County for us. So thank you, volunteers, and everybody that helps us be more successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And, you know, unfortunately, you don't see this on the screen, this agenda. But if you've seen the list of the people, it's got to be over 100. I counted them at one time, but it's a great number of volunteers that help Pennington County moving and keep forward. So I appreciate you taking the time to pull that, Ms. Hancock. With that, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve number 10.
Second.
Moved by Roskneck, seconded by Hancock to approve the volunteers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda, votes is the Youth City Council Year in Review presentation. And we've got the Youth City Council here, and Kristin, just please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, sir.
Might want to recognize who you got with you.
Hello. So I just want to start by saying thank you for having us and hearing us out and all of your support. I'm Adrian Young. I'm the former chair.
I'm Alex Von der Oo. I'm the former vice chair.
I'm Shoria Goyle. I'm a returning Youth City Council member.
I'm Jager Parks, and I'm the current chair.
I'm Ioana Matute, and I'm the incoming vice chair of the YCC.
Thank you.
So now we're just going to go over the Year in Review. First, we're just going to focus overall, then we'll go more into the DC trip. So first, for June, we sworn our new members, which was great. And we just did that again this June, so we'll be excited to tell you that next year. But that's about all we did in June. We got in the new members so we could get good work done.
And then I get to do July. So July was a super fun month for us because we do our summer retreat. So we get to kind of go around the city and see some really awesome things. We got to go to Fort Creole, the courthouse, the Monument Health, got a tour there. It was super cool. It was good for us to kind of get into the community and see what our efforts and learn about things that we can hopefully help and improve in the future. And then we also, if you can see on the top, like, your guys might be left, but right corner, we had a table at Pride, so that was super fun. Yeah, that was July.
During August, we swore in Charis, and we helped with the Helpline Center presentation, which encouraged us to distribute Health and Wellness Committee pins made by FIZZ and eventually create our own suicide hotline posters advertising the new number and hang them around the schools.
And then in September, Laura came to discuss the importance of extra interviews so that we can make sure that we're continuing to improve the council. Our marketing work group was created, which was very needed, let me tell you. And then our Health and Wellness met with the superintendent to discuss promoting 988 in the schools. And it's super cool because essentially, I actually got to see all the posters around, and that was super cool. And then we finished our budget for 2023.
During October, we held our fall retreat, which helped us kind of build solidarity with each other so we could continue to do work in the future. We were able to get some ideas, which we'll be able to see in November.
Oh, big month for November. So November, the fire chief, sorry, excuse me, came and presented. And then Richie also presented on his trip to the South Dakota Municipal League Conference. And then we discussed, we discontinued our Unity and Equity Committee. And then we had our Health and Wellness started a Boredom Buster Project bags, which is super cool to see. And then we decided to go to the National League of Cities for sure, finalized in November.
During December, we planned a potluck, but that had to be canceled due to the crazy amount of snow we were getting this year. We introduced the Youth Philanthropy Project in collaboration with the Black Hills Area Community Foundation, and we had a short discussion on the social studies standards, in which no action was taken.
And then in July, our Health and Wellness Committee distributed the posters advertising the 988 crisis hotline in Rapid City Public Schools, and then also St. Thomas More in Rapid City Christian.
In February, the Rapid City Police Department Chief, Don Hendrick, presented on the police operations and the importance of quality police work in the community, which was great. And Mr. Nordstrom presented and gave his insight about the NLC conference in Kansas City, which also helped us kind of understand what we would be experiencing in DC because that was also a National League of Cities planned event. We also had our spring retreats where we discussed some wins, which were things we did that were good, and mainly improvements that we need to make because there's always things that need to be fixed, and that includes us.
And then in March, Kristen Haas, the Assistant Public Works Director, presented. The Health and Wellness Committee selected your chairs because our former chairs would be graduating. And then we had a mayoral candidate discussion. And then also in March, super exciting, a lot of our members, a few of our members got to go to the National League of Cities, which I'll let them talk about right now.
Okay, so one of the main things of the National League of Cities that they talk about there is problem-solving strategies. These strategies can be used in our entire lifetimes, and they're just so useful to start practicing at a young age and then start using more to accomplish more at an older age. Some of these problem-solving strategies where peoples and partners can create possibilities. When we can get anything and everything done when we use people and possibilities. And then the second one was relationship building plus time is success. When we give time to build relationships, we can obtain success. And then the third thing, which is probably the most important thing out of all of these, is we have to work together. Everyone has their own opinions, and we don't have to agree with each other. But if we're patient and we work together, we can accomplish so many great things.
Next, moving on to the issues around the nation. First, we talked about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which was interesting because we have used those in South Dakota and in our county, as we've seen. And it was just great to learn more about that. We talked some about climate change, cost for families, violence prevention and trauma assistance, and then fighting the availability of synthetic drugs and some housing issues. And I just thought this was all really great because even though I and a lot of the other people who went wouldn't say we agreed with everything that was presented, being exposed to different opinions definitely strengthens your own. Because being able to hear what these federal officials are saying, you know why you disagree with it instead of just that you disagree with it. Some ideas we took home and realized were good ideas. But most importantly, we strengthened the opinions that we already had and developed some new ones.
Another thing that we did during this was we had a mock election during. So we started learning about the election process from a lot of people, like mayors and such. And we had a mock election in this event. And we essentially just had people from every table. And it just went up to district level, up until like two people were left for the final person to like hold the chair meeting for the event. And then we learned about transportation and infrastructure, where youth delegates discussed issues with transportation and how to make public transportation more accessible and safer. One example is that in DC, they have the metro system and so that people can get to anywhere around the city safely and pretty easily. And then we learned about the public issues, where this was a time for youth delegates to discuss issues within their community that mattered most to them. Some people talked about LGBTQ rights, homelessness, skin control, and a lot more. And that was wonderful.
And then right after that, we had the great honor of meeting both our senators, Senator Rounds and Senator Thune, who took time to speak to youth delegates about issues that matter to us, such as college prices and college funding. And in turn, they learned more about what the Rapid City Youth City Council is doing within the community.
I think overall, we took a lot away from the experience is that I think it's important that we all find our voice. And I think that overall, we learned that you can have a voice in your community, even if you're a young person. Is that during all these conferences, we met up with so many young people from all over the entire United States. And they really showed us that regardless of your age, you can have an impact in your community, and you can really help each other. And one thing that I was doing during this time was I was paging for the United States Senate, and I met up with the Youth City Council, and I had a great experience to share my experience in DC and talk to them about the issues that we had here and compare them with those issues in Rapid City and how different cities address these issues, and young people can advocate on behalf of what their opinions are.
Moving on to what we did in April, we gave about the same presentation to the rest of the Youth City Council. And what I thought was really important, we finalized the 2024 budget, but we finally got in some fundraising that's required by our bylaws in there. And that was due partially to the suggestion by Commissioner Hancock. I just want to say that the 2,000 out of the 34,000 isn't exactly a huge percentage of it, but this is just when we're starting, and that is just a baseline. We definitely plan to fundraise more than that so that we can be operating more on our own funds than funds that are coming from the city and county. And that's something that even though I'm moving on in life and going to college, I'm still going to try to help the Youth City Council in finding ways to keep their funding to themselves because that's a big passion of mine. Finally, we went on to the Youth Philanthropy Awards, and the mayoral candidate forum was further discussed with Elevate, in which we decided that they would be hosting the mayoral candidate forum instead of us because of some liability issues.
And that's it. I just want to say a huge thank you to all of you, county commissions, all of our school, other city council members and school board members, our school people. It means a lot, especially Sean Byer, Brian Mueller. It means a lot. And I think it's really a huge thing for all of us, not only to find our voices, but to help others find their voices. I think that's just a big part of why we do what we do and why it means so much to all of us. And so thank you for your support.
Well, thank you, guys, for your presentation. I'll give a little insight on this. Your funding comes from the Sheriff's Department, but you've presented to the commission for the last three years, but it's used to be about budget time. But this is a unique partnership between not only Pennington County and Rapid City, but also the school system. It's a three-way partnership with Christians' wages and Sean's wages to help keep you going. And one of the other things that I think you guys failed to mention in this is several of you have also been to some of the community relations forums and actually presented or even spoke at them, right? And so that's a big plus, too. But I think your presentation was spot on, and it was good. And one of the other things that you guys got going on next month is you're going to be visiting the county campus, which is you toured the 911 jail, you had your strategic planning here at the county, also care campus. So you know, some of the input that I've gotten from past youth councils is that they really didn't know what the county did, but you guys, once you came and visited, were really in awe and asked for how to help and volunteers. We just seen earlier all our volunteers, so let that out. We'll go to the commission to see if they have, there's no action on this. This is just a presentation. So, but any commissioners have any questions? Mr. Roskneck.
That was a great presentation, and I really appreciate the things that you guys are doing. I don't know where you're going forward with your careers, but I do hope you have aspirations to be a mayor of Rapid City or maybe a commissioner for Pennington County. So we need folks like you on our team. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any further questions? Thank you, guys, for what you do, and thank you, Kristin, for all the work that you do. Keep on. I'm sorry I missed the elections because I had a phone call, so I was out in the hallway. But their last election was, you guys did some campaigning and did some good debating, and I think you're getting a good picture, and I'm happy that you guys move forward. I did want to say, Alex, you're also doing an interim with Black Hills Area County Government, right? Or is that over with now?
That was last summer. The position was closed this summer.
Okay. But you did have that experience, and you guys have stepped up to help out your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we come up to item 12, items from commission manager. This is going to be the letter from Black Hills National Forest Service news release for withdrawal of acres in the Pactola Reservoir, which was continued from the 6623 Board of Commissioner meetings. When we brought this up, you know, I'll take ownership of that. I brought it forward without some of the information that our hard rock mining ordinance hadn't quite been done yet. And so we're still working on that with staff and so forth. And I see that I've got several speaker request forms, and we had two different groups that wanted to come up and present on this item to the commission because we were considering doing a letter of either support or what some of the conditions were from the county commission. But I think with light that we don't have the hard rock mining ordinance in place and so forth, that may be a little indigenous to move forward with something along those lines. I just wanted to say that. But we are going to allot the two 10-minute timeframes for Mr. Bruce Ellison and Mr. Quinn Neff because we committed to that. The speaker request forms, I am going to set that at two minutes apiece because I think I'm going to let those two present, and then I am going to go to the commission for a motion on the floor. I believe we have four possible motions on this. We have the motion to where we could be neutral, leave it as is. We have a motion that Scott Guffey had rolled up and set forth. And I think we've got some other ones from the other two presenters today. But after those presentations, I want a motion on the floor first before we go to public comment. And the reason why I want to do this is today is the day we have a lot of people on our agenda. This was meant to be, I think, the commission had good intent to review this for public comment to the Forest Board. But you, as citizens, also have that responsibility, and you have that access to do that by the end of the day today, too. So please, if you have your concerns, they've had, we listened, me and Ron attended the one at the Rapid Coda. You can express those in the comment part of the Forest Board's website. So I please encourage you to do that. But today, we're going to limit this discussion to two minutes per speaker for the speakers that come up because we do have other business. And when we do come up with hard rock mining ordinance to the commission, we will be setting special dates for that because we know there's going to be a lot of comment on that. So I don't want you to feel like we're trying to rush through this or we're not going to give you the time to speak. It's just, this is a different forum that we're discussing. So if everybody's clear on that, I will start with Mr. Ellison for his presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board of Commissions, good night, it's good to have you.
And we did want to limit this to 10 minutes.
I don't even know if I'll take that long, sir.
Okay, I'm just making it clear. We told the Youth Council 10 minutes, too, so whatever.
What I've asked Holly to do is to...
And I will, before you start, I will make the comment that we've gotten all the emails and so forth that have been sent to us.
My problems with machines. What I have displayed here, my name is Bruce Ellison. I'm an attorney. I'm a grandfather. I live along Rapid Creek. And I am very concerned about protecting our Rapid Creek watershed. What we have before the commission is an opportunity for a resolution or letter, whatever you choose to, however you choose to do it. We were in a situation where the Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management has proposed a two-year with a possibility of a 20-year mineral claims withdrawal and a part of the Rapid Creek watershed. If you look at the map that is up on display, you will see an area marked in black, which goes all the way from Rapid City to the north of Pactola, all the way a bit up into Lawrence County, far west past Deerfield Reservoir, and then down south and around, again, surrounding pretty much the Pactola area. Now, Lake Pactola or Pactola Reservoir already has a mineral claims withdrawal around its immediate area. What the Forest Service and the BLM are supposed to do is for a two-year period to study the possibility of a 20-year mineral claims withdrawal. And they have proposed approximately 20,000 acres. That on this map is in yellow. You'll see it surrounds the Pactola Lake area. You will see that this leaves a lot of the Rapid Creek watershed not included in the current proposal. What is being proposed here is a resolution or a letter by which the commission would encourage the Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management, not merely to approve what they have suggested as a withdrawal area, but to include the upper creek, I'm sorry, the upper side of the Rapid Creek watershed, which would be basically the area to the west and the northwest and the southwest. If you look at the boxes that are depicted here, those are boxes of claims, you will see that there are many claims within the Rapid Creek watershed that are not included in the proposed 20,000 of the approximate 195,000 acres that constitute the Rapid Creek watershed. The purpose of the resolution that is being proposed is to say you need to expand that. For example, if you look up by Deerfield Reservoir, way up on the western corner, you'll see that even the west of that is Nichols Creek. Now, I have submitted to each one of you a copy of South Dakota Rules ARSD 24510317, which is the South Dakota State definition of what constitutes the Rapid Creek watershed. It is approximately a two-page document, and it... north would be coming into our, our watershed. We know this, we know this is critical. Um, we don't have to talk about it, the airbase being requiring it, Rapid City requiring it. I have a well. So many people live along Rapid Creek. We have private wells. There are a lot of water districts that also draw this water from this area. So what we're talking about is protecting it just to find out more about it, protecting it to study it more and see if this is something that would be a good idea in this area. And as the chair pointed out, we don't have a hard rock mining ordinance yet. So outside of the yellow area, even within the watershed, none of the existing claims would be protected absent regulations imposed by hard rock mining ordinance. You'll also see that there are areas within Pennington County on this map where there are claims outside of the watershed. They're in smaller watersheds, like one along Spring Creek. That's why we need a hard rock mining ordinance because even if this was expanded, it wouldn't cover all of our watersheds. So I, I, this map is, is something that I, I suggest is a good idea to really look at to see how we can, how our county can best protect us while we really find out what about all these precious resources that we have upstream in this particular matter. Um, I don't have really much more to say other than to urge the passage of the resolution. Um, morning, sir.
Morning, sir.
Um, and to, you know, give us a chance. Without our water, what kind of future do we have here? And all we're asking for is that we have a good protection of it while we really understand the dynamics of it, what is really there and, you know, making some of the comparisons. Is water more precious than gold? Is it more precious than some of the things? Some people, the people who make the profits will say, yeah, it really is. How many jobs do we have for tourism? Seventeen thousand? How many jobs would be for mining? Couple hundred. And the possibility, the real possibility, the, the central hills could be like the northern hills in terms of water. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can. Um, but please, this map, I think says it all. And look at that water list. Uh, you will see that, uh, we've had quite a lot of areas to protect and many of you will recognize those who are around you or upstream from you, we get your water from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I'm just going to reiterate again that, that, you know, this isn't the ordinance that we're working on. This is something that was brought forward to the commission is do we want to do a resolution? Uh, and this commission does support clean water. They tried to, they've worked with different, uh, organizations to get, uh, Missouri over to east or western side part of the state and so forth. And so I just wanted to express that. And I just want to reiterate one more time that, uh, as citizens, you, today's the day that you can do it in writing and get it in there and make your opinion because I just went through a lot of my paperwork here today. We've had over probably 20, uh, letters for both sides. I'm not saying one another, but this is just a resolution. It's not part of the ordinance. So we granted you this time to be able to express yourself. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Ellis. With that, uh, the second part, second presentation, to be fair, was, is presentation from South Dakota Minerals Industries Association, Mr. Quinn Neff. Thank you, Quinn.
Good morning, Commissioner La Croix and all other commissioners. Glad, uh, to hear that you guys are looking at taking a neutral stance on this. But I'll take advantage of my time here. I'm just going to introduce who the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association is and sure, show a quick video, uh, that can kind of cover the big picture faster and in less words than I can. So, and then we'll, uh, just touch on some points on our side on the mineral withdrawal.
Thanks, Quinn.
So I just wanted to, before I show that video, I just wanted to tell you who the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association is. I'll get it in full view here. So South Dakota Mineral Industries Association, uh, you know, our vision is to develop safe, sustainable, responsible resources here in South Dakota and the Black Hills. Uh, we're not here to advocate for one project specifically or against the project. Uh, we're here to provide education, advocate and collaborate with our policymakers, educators, local communities, uh, just to help educate on why the mineral industries is important. Um, and you know, mineral industries supports our way of life. You know, everything we touch, use, you know, depends on mining. So, uh, we're about a year old, uh, right there. It represents about 1,100 employees, many of which are right here in the Black Hills, many in Pennington County. So I just wanted to point that out. And then I, I just want to point this out because, you know, you guys hear from a lot of NGOs and other groups and I think it's important to know who's on our board of directors, uh, where our money comes from. It comes from employees and member companies, uh, people involved in all aspects of mining. It can be accounting, it can be legal. It doesn't have to be a mining engineer. So I just wanted to show this. These, these folks on our board have a lot of diverse backgrounds in all aspects of mining. So I encourage the commission, you know, if you have questions after today about mining and exploration, to reach out to us and, you know, if it's specifically about NEPA, we have people that are experts in that. So here I'll just, I'm, I'm going to show a video that kind of gives you the big picture on why minerals are important, uh, why domestic mining is important. And then I'll, I'll touch back here locally on some points about the withdrawal.
All renewable energy future. Wind and solar will power the world of tomorrow. And tomorrow isn't far off. It's time to wake up. You're having a dream. Here's the reality. Oil, natural gas and coal provide 84% of all the world's energy. That's down just two percentage points from 20 years ago. And oil still powers nearly 97% of all global transportation. Contrary to headlines claiming that we're rapidly transitioning away from fossil fuels, it's just not happening. Two decades and $5 trillion of governments investing in green energy and we've barely moved the needle. This was supposed to be easy. Why is it so hard? In a word, rocks. To get the same amount of energy from solar and wind that we now get from fossil fuels, we're going to have to massively increase mining by more than 1,000%. This isn't speculation. This is physics. Copper, iron ore, silicon, nickel, chromium, zinc, cobalt, lithium, graphite, and rare earth metals like neodymium. We need them all. And then those metals and materials have to be turned into motors, turbine blades, solar panels, batteries, and hundreds of other industrial components. That also takes lots of energy, which requires even more mining. As a World Bank study put it, these green technologies are in fact significantly more material intensive than our current energy mix. That may be the understatement of the century. Raw materials account for 50 to 70% of the costs to manufacture both solar panels and batteries. Until now, it hasn't really mattered that much because wind and solar still account for only a few percentage points of the global energy supply. They're an applause line for environmentalists, not a major energy player, and it's unlikely they will be in the foreseeable future. But for the sake of argument, let's say we sharply ramp up mining. Where would these new mines be located? Well, for one, China. That country is today the single largest source of most of our critical energy materials. The United States is not only a minor player, but is dependent on imports for 100% of 17 critical minerals. Do we want to give China more political and economic leverage? Europe has made itself dependent on Russia for 40% of its natural gas. How well has that worked out? Ironically, we have all the minerals we need right here in North America, but good luck trying to get them out of the ground. Proposals to build mines in the United States and increasingly almost everywhere else meet fierce opposition, if not outright bans. To give just one example, in 2022, the Biden administration canceled a proposed copper nickel mine in northern Minnesota. This was after years of delays navigating a maze of environmental regulations. And yes, the same environmentalists and green leaning politicians who tout all the benefits of electric cars are the same people who make mining the materials sensible to build those cars like copper and nickel all but impossible. Try to square that circle. So far, we've only talked about today's energy needs. What about tomorrow's? Future energy demand will be far greater than today's. That's been true for the entire history of civilization. The future will not only have more people, but also more innovations. And entrepreneurs have always been better at inventing new ways to use energy than to produce it. It's obvious, but worth stating, before the invention of automobiles, airplanes, pharmaceuticals or computers, there was no energy needed to power them. And as more people become more prosperous, they will want the things others already have, from better medical care to vacations to cars. In America, there are about 80 cars for every 100 citizens. In most of the world, it's about five for 100 citizens. Over 80% of air travel is for personal purposes. So that's 2 billion barrels of oil a year. Hospitals use 250% more energy per square foot than an average commercial building. And the global information infrastructure, the cloud, already uses twice as much electricity as the entire country of Japan, the world's third largest economy. The massive data centers at the heart of the cloud alone consume almost 10 times more electricity than the world's 10 million electric cars. E-commerce has taken off and is propelling record growth in warehouses increasingly filled with energy hungry robots. America's truck freight index more than doubled in the past decade to deliver the goods to and from those warehouses. These are today's known trends. While we can't predict the future, we can predict there'll be more innovation in robotics, drones, quantum computing, biotechnology, and new industries not yet imagined. All of it will require more energy, a lot more. Fossil fuels, nuclear energy, and yes, renewables will be required. But if you think we could get it all from wind and solar, dream on. I'm Mark Mills, senior fellow at the Manhattan Institute for Prager University. Thank you for watching this video.
So I just wanted to give that, just kind of what's the global perspective on energy and mining today. Um, but when we're talking about here domestically, uh, you know, there's some big implications even here in the Black Hills. You know, we covered this, the chart on the right, those minerals are all 100% imports from other countries, mainly China, Russia. These aren't, you know, necessarily our allies that we're dependent on. Um, just some quick mineral terms for you guys to think about as we go through this. Critical minerals, there's actually three different lists now. The Department of Energy has a critical minerals list, which they just added copper to. Uh, Department of Defense, for those of you that were at the, uh, defense symposium, they have their own critical minerals list. Uh, and then USGS also has a list and they're all a little bit different. Um, but you know, a lot of the past that we talked about here in the Black Hills is not modern mining. Those are mines that started in the 1870s. Regulations weren't in place till the 1970s. So mining today, you know, is really on the cutting edge of technology. I think the mining industry has logged more autonomous hours of vehicles underground than any other industry before we saw autonomous vehicles. Uh, environmental sustainability is a number one focus of mining today. One of the safest industries, I think road construction and other types of, uh, you know, house building things are actually more dangerous than the mining industry. Um, research and development, we're always working on that. Partnering with communities, obviously if you don't have community buy-in today, you can see what happens to your project. It's very, very hard to move forward. And then women in mining, it's an industry that's growing more diverse every day.
Got about one minute left, Quinn.
Oh, you get to the, so I mean, one example, throw the, this slide. Every time we push a project or say no here, we're, we're forcing those projects to countries, uh, where people don't have a voice. They can't advocate for themselves. This is a picture of cobalt. So if you have a cell phone here today, more than likely the cobalt in that phone came from the Democratic Republic of the Congo, um, where they don't enforce environmental and labor laws. Um, so we say not in my backyard. I think sometimes it might be better to say it is better in our backyard. Uh, you know, we've heard the tourism industry is really big. I'm from Keystone. I was on the town board there. I support tourism. Any, as anybody else. Uh, but we've had timber tourism mining here for 150 years. And so to talk about the impacts from our mining, you know, I see record growth. I see record property evaluations. I don't see the impact that, uh, you hear about just destroying our tourism industry. I think that's very far fetched in that there's processes in place, you know? No one's actually proposed a mine here in Pennington County. I, I don't know where, where the county would want to pay, have taxpayer money study a hypothetical mine near Pactola when no one's even close, they haven't even explored for anything there. So how's my time, Lloyd?
You actually do. One final comment, please.
All right. Well, I'll just leave you with the facts on Black Hills mining and exploration. Uh, these are from the Forest Service right now of all the proposed exploration projects. And to note, there is no active exploration project today. These are all proposed with the Forest Service. If you add up the maximum disturbance of all those projects, it amounts to 12 acres. And a lot of that, uh, includes opening old trails, existing trails to get to where they need to go. New disturbance may be the drill pads, which are no bigger than, you know, a house pad. And that's not permanent. That's reclaimed when they're done. Um, active large scale mines in the entire Black Hills, there are none. And we're talking hard rock mines. So gold, silver, um, there, the last actual mine permit the Forest Service issued was, I believe, for Pete Lean. That was for aggregate. Um, other than that, there is no impact on the national forests of active mines today. But since 2009, we've had 41,000 acres proposed for withdrawal. Um, and those past withdrawals actually never went through. Uh, money was spent on studies, um, and they never were finalized. So I'll just end with that sign up there, the F3 gold mine will poison our water. You know, I like to say that that message is brought to you by mining on a billboard that's mined with materials from the ground. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, just, I would encourage the commission, you know, if you're not going to take one side or the other, there's some good questions to ask. I saw in your letter, you know, maybe requesting that the comment period be extended and have our forest advisory board actually be allowed to have input as they have on all, all past withdrawals. So.
Well, you know, thank you, Quinn. And when we bring up the, the mining, hard rock mining ordinance again, it, it, it's probably going to be four to six months. I'm not going to lie. But like I said, when we decide to get that moving again, which they're, they're looking at it, we will have a special meeting and be able to give both sides plenty of time to present. Cause I know this was kind of a short, uh, stint for both of you guys, but this is, uh, to the commission to see if they want to do a resolution or not. But I find it, I, I think it's a little bit unorthodox when we don't have our ordinance for it. But I'll just reiterate again, you guys can, you've probably already done your public comment. I'm sure Mr. Ellis has done his public comment, but for the people in the audience, your concerns, today's the day to get them into the forest service for that. And with that, I, I thank you, Quinn.
Yeah, I'll be around for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I have a question.
Sure.
Quinn, hypothetical mine you talked about, I mean, you didn't really talk about a hypothetical mine, but hypothetically, what would the soonest a mine could, you know, assuming we did high rock mining ordinance and all that, hypothetically, how soon could a mine potentially even go in that particular area if we were just spitballing?
Do you want to start? Just, I would encourage the commission, you know, if you're not going to take one side or the other, there's some good questions to ask. I saw in your letter, you know, maybe requesting that the comment period be extended and have our Forest Advisory Board actually be allowed to have input as they have on all past withdrawals.
Well, you know, thank you, Quinn. And when we bring up the mining, hard rock mining ordinance again, it's probably going to be four to six months, I'm not going to lie. But like I said, when we decide to get that moving again, which they're looking at it, we will have a special meeting and be able to give both sides plenty of time to present. Because I know this was kind of a short stint for both of you guys, but this is to the commission to see if they want to do a resolution or not, but I find it, I think it's a little bit unorthodox when we don't have our ordinance for it. But I'll just reiterate again, you guys can, you've probably already done your public comment, and I'm sure Mr. Ellis has done his public comment, but for the people in the audience, your concerns, today's the day to get them into the Forest Service for that. And with that, I thank you, Quinn.
Yeah, I'll be around for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I have a question.
Sure.
Quinn, hypothetical mine you talked about, I mean, you didn't really talk about a hypothetical mine, but hypothetically, what would the soonest a mine could, you know, assuming we did hard rock mining ordinance and all that, hypothetically, how soon could a mine potentially even go in that particular area if we were just spitballing?
Do you want to start where we don't even know what's in the ground?
Yeah, I'm just saying, just roughly, I mean, are we talking five years, ten years, twenty years?
Well, I'll tell you this, the U.S. has the longest permitting timeline in the world for mining operations.
How long is that?
So when I say that, that's seven to ten years if you were, if you actually knew that there was an economic deposit in the ground and knew what the mine was going to look like. Are you processing it onsite? Are you hauling it away? You know, seven to ten years. And that includes probably litigation in there. But if you're talking about this project up there that's grassroots, never put a hole in the ground to see what's there, you could talk about twenty years of exploration. Right now, I think there's five years into a permit already, and we haven't drilled a hole. So I can comfortably say thirty to forty years if you're talking about looking for a mineral, defining the deposit, economic to process, getting the mine permit. It's a long, long process, and that's a lot of the reason why we're so dependent on other countries at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. With that, like I had mentioned at the beginning of this, is I am going to go to the commission for either questions or a motion. I'd like to have a motion on the floor before going to public comment.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggar.
Yes, I'd like a motion to say that we are neutral. We believe in water quality and the impacts of watershed, but this commission should stay neutral at this point because of, we're saying we don't have mining ordinance, we're being told that mining is the main issue, why this is going to happen. So mine would be the motion to stay neutral and say what we have said before, Holly sent a resolution basically that says that we believe in the water quality and the impacts in the watershed, and that we believe in clean water as a commission as well.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and let me recap the motion. The motion is to, at this point, stay neutral but send a letter in saying that, pulling that one more time.
Basically, we believe in water quality and impacts of watershed in the Black Hills as well, but at this point, we are staying neutral as a commission because we believe in that as well, but we don't have all the evidence and based on both sides and what I seen today, I think it's crucial that we stay neutral on this.
Okay. So Holly, you understand?
Does that motion include submitting the letter as proposed or not submitting any comments at all?
No comments or sending that letter, so that's what I was trying to get.
I'd say we say, we're just saying, I say, send the letter and say, we are sending, basically staying neutral like we have sent them before, Holly, and say that we believe in clean watershed as well, but we are not taking a stance on the acreage at this point, whether it be the twenty thousand or the hundred and ninety thousand.
Would you be okay to a friendly amendment?
Yes.
To add that at least the federal government's going to make ordinances that they discuss with the county, as I've seen.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, we got...
Scott Guffey, you want to help us out a little bit? And then tell us maybe what you're thinking. I have talked to you earlier about staying neutral.
Sure.
Just some comments, if you would.
Sure. Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resource Director. I think we could arrive at the point of the motion here by, what was drafted for the comments is strike the last sentence of the first paragraph. Copy, copy.
Can you read that?
Which document are you reading on?
Scott, there's a bunch of comments. Can you read what you're thinking?
So the comments were drafted by Holly here was, "While Pennington County Board Commissioner supports responsible mining in the Black Hills to support technology in our national defense, the integrity and longevity of our drinking water sources remain a priority." And then that last sentence says, "We see and support the proposed withdrawal." Strike that sentence. And then the second paragraph says, "With that said, is our understanding withdrawal request was issued at the national level after local Forest Service had conducted NEPA process and found no significant impacts from the proposed exploratory mining proposal. The Pennington County Board of Commissioners supports local control of our federal lands and would expect any future management decisions and/or proposed withdrawals being initiated by the Black Hills National Forest with consultations from state and local officials."
That'd be my motion.
Okay. So we got it simplified. We're just striking that, and we're making our point that we would like to be part of the state and local. Okay, so I don't need a friendly amendment.
With "striking," we see and support proposed withdrawal.
Is the seconder okay with that?
I believe so. I'm just verifying some wording, but yeah, I think so.
So we got a first and a second, and now we have discussion. Mr. Roskine.
Mr. Chair. So on the twenty-sixth of April, I attended a meeting at the Ram Cota, and I assume some of you other folks were out there. And hundreds of people got up and spoke. So today, I'm speaking for those people, and my decision's going to reflect what they had to say. And I'm in full support of this letter as drafted, and I will not support the motion because I'm going to take a stand. And my stand is water is more necessary to sustain human life than minerals. And we have a watershed. You go to your faucet right now, you're going to get water. But we decide the day, thirty, forty years. Everybody knows the county's grown like crazy. This decision that we make today, we got to be thinking thirty, twenty, thirty years out in the future. To me, water's paramount, and I'm going to, I wrote a letter, and I've written letters, and I'm going to, I'm going to make a stand, and I'm not switching.
Thank you, Mr. Roskine. Mr. Drews.
Thank you. Apologize for not being here earlier, Bruce, for your entire presentation, but I did watch from last week, so I saw, or from two weeks ago, so I saw you presented at that point in time. I appreciate your passion and your tenacity on this subject. And Quinn, I appreciate the information that you provided today also. I'm not one that supports a lot of federal regulation, and so I'm opposed to this. I will support the neutral position if that's where the majority is at. Actually, I would be in opposition if there was a motion to be completely opposed to it. My feeling is, is that there's enough regulation at the state level that we don't need to have more regulation at the federal level for these controls. And so that's where I'm at on it. I received, I've received all kinds of emails and letters, et cetera, regarding this. Probably the one that sums up my feelings the best is the one I received from the South Dakota Stockholders Association yesterday, in which they either push for us to be neutral or be in opposition to it. But I think the stance in that letter essentially sets out where I'm at on the whole thing. So that's where I'm going to be. If the majority appears to be in favor of the neutral, I'll support that. But if there's a substitute motion that comes along in opposition, I'd be supportive of that.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Laster.
I want to point out a couple of different things. The reason why I asked Quinn that question about how long it would take to get a mine going, just for pure understanding on our side of it, is you want us to support, those who are in favor of this, want us to support withdrawal of twenty thousand acres for a two-year study. Well, if it takes anywhere between seven to ten years, most likely twenty years, it doesn't make sense to remove land underneath the federal guidelines and get it out of the hands of the states, or the states or the counties to be in control of it, or at least have some say in it. I can't follow that logic either. I've come along with Commissioner Drews. I'd rather the federal government not be able to do certain things. But if it's a two-year study, get the two-year study done and then come back with evidence. I don't see any evidence at this moment that requires us to do something. We don't have our hard rock mining ordinance set in place for the county, and if we don't have answers to the study that wants to be done, if it takes seven to ten years just to get a mine going, you've got two years to get a study done, and that's what you requested. So get the study done and then come back with evidence that shows differently. That's why I lean to at least at a minimum being neutral, but I do tend at this moment to be, as Commissioner Drew said, against, opposed to this. I don't know where the rest of the commission is on that, but I'm willing to support a neutral stance so that we can move forward and do our hard rock mining ordinance as well.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Ms. Haggar, do you have a comment before I speak?
Yes, just a couple of things. I recognize that it says the Forest Service, was said it was understanding withdrawal request was issued at the national level after the Forest Service had conducted a NEPA process and found no significant impacts from the proposed exploratory mining proposal. I guess, I guess I'm not getting the, the letter of support. It says, Ron says, "Our Natural Resource Director, Scott Guffey, myself, will present a letter of support at our next scheduled commission." Are you in support or are you neutral, Scott, by chance?
I would support the motion on the floor.
So you're neutral? Okay. Just making sure, because in Ron's letter, it said you were supportive of the letter of support on this dais that Ron had presented before. Number two, we talked about wilderness area, and I meant that, that a lot of times the wilderness area become wasteland. Now we want to do and have the federal government come in again. And what did wilderness areas do? They did not protect them, they didn't do anything to them, they became wastelands. And I'm afraid that with this, federal government will end up doing the same thing around Pactola. And it has major impacts when you do that. When you let the federal government tell your county or your cities what to do, it has major impacts on what's going to happen and who's going to protect that in the long run. And we've seen federal government. They haven't, I'll be nice. Okay, so at this point, it was said too that people for profit, this is about people for profit when you're mining or doing things, those people for profit live in Rapid City, they live in Pennington County, and there's hundreds of them that go to jobs, if you look at all these jobs in these areas that people go to, that they're impacted if they make watershed unclean as well. So I'm not, I'm not getting when you say people for profit because they care about the water too. So the other thing is, is watershed. I talked about watershed last time, and what is the major contributor of causing watershed contamination? It's humans. It's humans by stormwater runoff, leaking underground storage tanks, landfills, human waste and chemicals during immersion activities like boating, motorized recreation, littering, UTV, ATV, onsite sewer and septic along Rapid Creek and Spring Creek. What contaminated, in 2012, what contaminated Sheridan Lake? Was it mining companies? It wasn't. It was human waste. So when we want to go after mining, and you have one mining company, I'm not opposed or for mining in a sense, I'm for clean water. Clean water has to do with more than just mining. So we're going to go after mining, but we're not going to go after cities or other places that are contaminated through stormwater, through creeks for wastewater protection. We did do a mine, we did do a septic ordinance, which is good. We have tried to enforce that, but you still have recreational and different things that are happening on these lakes that are also contaminants, but no one's talking about those spills. No one's talking about when a boat rolls over or something else and gasoline pours out and contaminates the creeks. So bottom line, I said this last time, I'm not for this letter, I'm not for this resolution because I'm not into federal government telling me what we should do on our lakes or anything else. If you oppose mining, that's okay, that's up to you, but what you should do is oppose watershed impacts and what those impacts are. We're picking on one issue, we're not picking on the main issue. So if your district, if your district has the mining, my district has stormwater, my district has watershed, my district is impacted by what you do in your district, just like the rest of us. So oppose it because it's in your district, I understand, that's okay, because that's your prerogative. But the main thing is find the facts and the information, and make sure when you're speaking on those issues, that you're talking about water quality and watershed, not just about a company that might end up impacting by one issue. You've got ten red on this paper. So that's where I base my facts at. So that's why I said we stay neutral, because if we want to do something, then we better start going after some of the cities and some of the things on watershed and stormwater, and making resolutions and letters to them about their impacts and what they're doing to our watershed. It shouldn't just be mining. So that's, that's my two cents. Again, if the mines are the issue and they become an issue, we're going to do a hard rock mining ordinance that will show us some of those impacts and if that's fact or not. To scare up everybody and put fear-mongering into people because of mining, you need to start looking at all the watershed. I think people would be more willing to clean up that water in many issues in many ways besides just mining. So those are my two cents, and I think we should stay neutral. And again, federal government should tell us what we should do.
Thank you, Deb. My comments are, now you can see how hot of a topic this is. I mean, this is sensitive to a lot of people and what's going on. That's why I laid down the rules at the beginning of the meeting. My thought processes on this is, as I stated earlier, my mistake. We didn't have our ordinance forward and done first before this come forward and wanted a comment from the commission to the forestry board. But we do have a motion on the floor now, and we're going to deal with it. As I said, I've got about twelve people that want to speak. So now you know what we are going to do, you know that we're going to have additional meetings when this comes forward, and we'll give more than ample time to speak at that point in time. But we could really have some good discussions that would take up a lot of other people's time today that had been waiting for their stuff to be dealt with today. That's why I wanted you to be respectful. We put the two minutes limit on there, and remember that you can make a comment today to the U.S. Forest Board. But I also, I think it's a little too forward right now with our ordinance to be sending out a resolution of either support or against from this commission. Each commission can, commissioner can send a letter on their own. I want to be clear on that. They can do that, and some have and some have not, but they can. But this board so far on the motions is to be neutral and want more information, and I just want to communicate that to the audience here today. But I also think without an ordinance, in order to be fair up here to go over an ordinance, I think it's unfair and could possibly be conflicts of interest to make a statement like this and then work on ordinance for it. That's my belief on this, and that's why I'm going to support the motion that's on the floor. But I wanted to give you the reasons for that before we start out. So with that, you've heard from each commissioner. I have twelve speaker request forms. We're going to do this in two minutes. You're going to have two minutes, and you know how, what the motion is on the floor, so, and I'd just like to remind you that we have a full agenda today, so to be respectful and try not to repeat yourself.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskine.
I just want to close by saying that there's roughly four hundred thousand acres under the custodial care of the Forest Service in Pennington County. I'm not anti-mining, I just think, I just think we got to be careful going forward, and there's two hundred thousand acres that are outside of this watershed, if the watershed's a hundred and ninety-five thousand. I don't have a problem with that, just so people are clear that I'm open-minded.
Okay. With that, I am going to go to public comment. First on my list is Jeannie Bush. And we have the light up here, that'll tell you, no, the light's not working. Holly will give you thirty seconds.
It'll just sound at two minutes.
It'll just sound in two minutes, so.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Bush. I live at 22541 Deer Meadow Drive. I live adjacent to the Jenny Gulch area where F-three has proposed to do some explorers. The average person uses sixty gallons of water a day. In the application for mining, the companies state that they estimate five to ten thousand gallons per day per drill site. That means for each drill site, eighty-three to a hundred and sixty-seven people would not have water from our precious aquifer. Where I live next to the proposed Jenny Gulch drill site, F-three promised that they would truck in water from Lead. Who cares? It's the same aquifer that I'm drawing from. F-three has proposed forty-two drill sites in the area right behind my house. At five to ten thousand a day, gallons per day per drill site, that equals two hundred and ten thousand to four hundred and twenty thousand gallons per day that could instead provide water for thirty-five hundred to seven thousand people each day. And another way to quantify that water is that that same two hundred and ten thousand And another way to quantify that water is that that same 210,000 to 420,000 gallons used on just that one day would provide water for a person for nine and a half years, or 19, nine and a half to 19 years. And yeah, years. What is a better way to use our water? I'm not against mining either, but we have to decide where our water is used and how it's used. In addition, it makes no sense to use our precious water for this when there's considerations to bring water from the Missouri uphill. Of all the things, of how we use our water, it just makes no sense. The game fish in Parks has classified the red-bellied snake as rare, and we have spotted them in, in the Northern Hills and just last week. My grandkids found one on my property, and that is, again, adjacent to the Jenny Gulch area. I ask you to support the US Forest Service, please.
Thanks, Jeannie. Next I have Sean, I can't read, what, is it Lagunitas? Okay.
Morning, everybody. How y'all doing?
Good.
Sean Wagner, disabled veteran, also American national here in South Dakota. I'm a constitutionalist. I'd like to start off with Title 18, Section 242, which is, makes it a crime for a person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. That's also in the South Dakota Constitution. Okay? As a South Dakota Constitution 46-1-3, the people are the owners of the water. Y'all, we give y'all permission to appropriate, give the rights to the water to these guys, which I don't trust science. I don't think a lot of people do right now. But I'm passionate about this. Okay, I love this. And I wanted to say that as one of 858 people, eight, one out of 858,469 American citizens, we do not get permission to this. You know, y'all speak up for us, y'all supposed to be leading by leadership, okay? And the next thing is Parks versus Cooper, that's state case law, which means the perennial intermittent streams, when they come in, those are protected under WOTUS, Waters of the United States. Okay? That's all the stuff that sometimes leads water or that always leads water to us. And as the EPA, Virginia versus EPA, which happened in Supreme Court about a year or so ago, that proved that the EPA is a fence-lined border, that's protected. This gentleman's map with yellow, yeah, that's protected by EPA, but they don't see what's outside of the fence. They don't care what's outside of the fence like we do. Okay, so there's a lot of federal laws, state laws, Park versus Cooper, and I can read it right here.
You got time, it's time.
Okay, well.
We appreciate it, we can, we see your passion. Like I said, we are going to have public meetings in the future, so.
That's on record, Title 18, Section 242, and thank y'all, and Waters, WOTUS, Waters of the United States.
Thank you, Sean.
For this as well, sir.
Appreciate it.
Next on our agenda is, boy, I have a tough time, somebody's ready. I can't tell, it's Alexander Mason?
Did I get? Pretty close. Thank you. My name is Alexander Masa. I am the Northern Hills organizer for the Black Hills Clean Water Alliance, but I am here speaking on my own behalf today. In regards to, I didn't get a chance to put together a fancy video, but I do urge you to look at the facts when people do bring these to you, Prager, as a conservative, Christian-leaning think tank. And in regards to this proposal, I think it's important, not only for the drinking water of Rapid City residents, but it's a matter of national security. Because as we all know, Ellsworth Air Force Base is a superfund site, whether we want to admit it or not, and that water is leaching into our servicemen and women's everyday lives. If we support this mineral withdrawal, and it ends up becoming a thing, and we support the protection of the Rapid Creek watershed for generations to come, it will be something that's not only looked on by people in this day as a great achievement, but as all of y'all's leadership and everyone else who has a chance to comment on this and to support the future growth of this area, everyone's kids, their grandkids, and future generations. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alex. Just so it doesn't seem like I'm rude, when I give you, when I do this, you got 30 seconds. Okay? Bill Young.
Good morning, Commissioner, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Lifelong resident of Rapid City. My folks settled here in 1904. In fact, my stepmother has sat in your seats in years past. Like many of you, I support clean water. I think we need to protect the entire watershed. I live along Rapid Creek, my water comes out of the aquifer, it's important to us. Deb mentioned how there's many things that we need to be looking at, stormwater, drainage, all of those things. Friends of mine and I clean the creek monthly. We've pulled out this year alone 250-gallon garbage bags of crap out of the creek, including shopping carts, a stroller, bicycles. One of the worst offenders is Pennington County at the fairgrounds. I see manure being pushed into Rapid Creek behind the fairgrounds. That is something I encourage you all to look into because that is a big deal. Water quality is the single most important aspect of life in western South Dakota. We've got to have clean water, do your jobs, protect the aquifer, protect the watershed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next we have Lilis Jardine.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Dr. Lilis Jardine. I live in Rapid City. I have worked in this area for some years and have lived in Billings and other places, but this is, this is home for me. I basically want to set the record straight, if I can do that in two minutes. We're not talking about critical minerals here, we're not talking about strategic minerals here, we're not talking about energy minerals here. Currently, what we're talking about is gold, which is none of those things. Gold is mainly used for jewelry and bullion and coins. We are a net exporter of gold in the United States. So when we're talking about gold mining, there's no clear reason to do it at this point for the United States, we're an exporter. Okay? The two-years withdrawal is, the temporary withdrawal is in place, that's already a thing. What is being discussed with the, the comments that are due this evening is the 20-year withdrawal. And I would urge you to get involved in, in favor of that withdrawal in whatever form you are comfortable, whether it's as a body, as an individual, as a family member, as a commissioner. Because we need a break from the massive gold exploration that is going on in the Black Hills. There are 248,000 acres of the Black Hills under active mining claims. And maybe somebody doesn't consider that exploration, but I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lilis. Next, we have Rain Ness.
Good morning, everyone. I'm part of Dakota Rural Action, but I'm here to speak on my, for myself. And first, you know, water is everything. Our body is made of what percentage? Does anyone know?
98%.
There you go. So as Deb had mentioned, why are we going to add one more situation to our water crisis? We don't need to. Thank you, Ron, for, you know, speaking up for your constituents. I too was at that meeting, and I think I heard one person that was for the mining. But with all of that, we need to protect what we have. Everyone here uses it. And, you know, like Deb said, there's more things that we need to look at now within the city, all of that, to make this a better place and to keep our water where it's at so everyone can enjoy it, because we all need it to survive, and that is a precious commodity to us.
Thank you, Rain.
Thank you.
The next two I have are on Zoom. So we will go to Nancy Hilding. Nancy, are you there?
Hello, I had to unmute and start my video.
Okay, Nat, now Nancy.
Yes.
I don't know if you've been paying attention since you're on Zoom, sometimes people step away, but.
No, I, I know I only have two minutes.
Okay, I'll let you start.
Okay, so, all right, I'm Nancy Hilding, I'm president of Perryhouse Audubon Society, and I'm speaking on behalf of the society. And I sent in a speaker request form, and I also sent you a letter on Friday. I, we support the withdrawal proposed by the Forest Service and the BLM, and we request a supplemental action by the Forest Service to enlarge that for the entire Rapid City drainage for water quality, but I'm going to speak on something else today. There is management areas assigned in the Forest Services, which is like zoning, and they have rules about that. And I'm going to show you here, if you can see it, I don't know if this will show. This is a, a map from the Forest Service on the management area for developed recreation, 8.2. This is the map for special botanical areas, I'm sorry, it doesn't show up very well. And this is a map for research natural areas. Okay, and this is a 2015 federal registered publication of the Forest Service's intent to withdraw research natural areas and special botanical areas for mineral entry that they proposed in 2015, had a two-year hold, and they didn't move it forward yet. So by their standard guidelines, I, I printed some of those up, you know, which is like zoning restrictions.
Okay, you got 30 seconds.
All right, they're supposed to withdraw research natural areas and special botanical entries for mineral entries. Those are standards, which means they have to do it. And for developed recreation areas, they are supposed to withdraw them also, that's a guideline, which means they can do a NEPA document to get out from underdoing it. So when they're proposing a mineral withdrawal around Pactola, they have included the Pactola Recre, Developed Recreation Area and the Canyon City RNA, which according to 2006 was planned. They're supposed to withdraw for mineral entry anyways.
Nancy, your time's up. Thank you very much. As I said, we're going to have other meetings. Next we have Rick Bell, and he's by Zoom also.
Good morning, everyone, Commissioners.
Okay.
I, I've been listening as well, two minutes. I, I don't have a lot to add, other than I support making a comment, positive comment to the Forest Service, to state our position as a county. And I've heard a lot today that I would disagree with in terms of Mr. Quinn said better in our backyard, it's not better in our backyard. And Dr. Lilis Jardine clarified that we're talking about gold mining, not all the other critical minerals and rare earths that Mr. Quinn stated. So we need to focus on the fact that this is a very special place, we need to protect the water. I think the county, at this point in time, is taking the easy way out by saying we're not having a position, when you really should be in concert with most of the citizens of this county who want to limit the amount of mining that would proceed here, gold mining we're talking about specifically. So I would just encourage Mr. Connect to, to keep pushing this commission forward in that way of thinking, and I appreciate the fact that everyone has the right to submit their own comments. I spoke at the April meeting with the Forest Service, I, I wrote similar kinds of comments to the Forest Service that were due today, and I would encourage everyone to support clean water in Pennington County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next I have Mike Cepac. Did I pronounce that right?
Pretty close, it's Cepac.
I'm always, I'm always pretty close.
Thank you for allowing me to talk to the commission today. My name is Mike Cepac. I'm a member of the South Dakota Board of, not part, South Dakota Mineral Association Board. I had 30 years of experience, over 30 years' experience with the South Dakota D A N R, as in Mining Engineering or Mining and Minerals Program. And I was going to talk today about how hard it is to get a mine permit, I think you guys have an idea of that. I thought I was going to change that up a little bit and say what happened since when I first started 30 years ago. It was a lot easier to get a bond or a permit back then, it was just pretty much, you know, get your paperwork together and it would be pretty much approved. Then we started adding conditions to those permits. Then we started looking at the bonds and found out the bonds were not sufficient enough, so we increased the bonds, reclamation bonds. Then we found out that bonds are just more than planting grass and reshaping land. Then we started looking at, we got to start treating the water that comes off of those sites. And as time went along, we went ahead and said, before you get your mine permit, you have to go through a unique and scenic lands determination. So we'd look at the land and say, is this exceptional or not? So we got that step in there. As we went along, we had problems with the acid mine drainage problem. So our geochemical requirements back then were not real good, so we upped them quite a bit. So that's been taken care of. So it's getting to be more and more about the water. And then we incorporated a lot of plans and specifications for containment systems for stormwater liner systems. And one thing we also did is we also instituted a post-closure period, where it's post-closure care that goes on beyond 30 years for the mine closure, plus a post-closure bond that goes on for as long as it takes to make sure the water is safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next I have Kathy Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I'm speaking on my own behalf this morning. My message is brief, I just want to say I support the motion on the floor to take a neutral stance on the withdrawal. But I encourage you not to set this up as a contest between the opportunity to mine and clean water. That's a false choice. There's just countless examples of mining being done in this country according to the current mining laws, statutes, regulations, at all levels of government, without any impact to water. So as you move forward with this and then in your ordinance, why I just encourage you to be real careful in terms of what you develop it to be your understanding on really the, the, the context, let's say, and what really doesn't, isn't relevant. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next I have Elizabeth Saylor.
Giving her time to.
Giving her your time to Quinn, okay. Quinn, just identify yourself for the record, again, please.
Quinn F., Director of the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association. I didn't get to go through, you know, the slides on water impacts, and so one of the examples I want to use on this mineral withdrawal is we hear, you know, from the other side that we want an EA, an environmental assessment, which is a from the other side that we want an EA, an environmental assessment, which is a lower level study for the mineral withdrawal. When we're talking about exploration projects, we want an EIS. We want the fullest extent, you know, of the study done on, on whatever applicant. Our request from the association is we want an EIS on the mineral withdrawal because I, I listened to the last meeting and, you know, there was comments that we, I mean, we all care about the watershed, we, we care about what all the impacts are to the watershed. And so it baffles me that we, on the other side, would request an EA when you have the opportunity to request an EIS to look at all water impacts. Uh, so to me, requesting an EA on this mineral withdrawal is just simply a way to make it happen faster. It's not about actually looking at other impacts to the water. So I just wanted to point that out, but, um, I just also wanted to point out in your packet, you know, there is a draft letter that we, we prepared for you. It's not necessarily taking a position, it's just simply recognizing that there is lots, existing laws and regulations in place. Um, and highlighting the fact, you know, this is a dangerous precedent. A mineral withdrawal, it was brought up the past one. They're looking at specific areas, and this was the local Black Hills office. And we have, you know, specific plants here that we need to protect or hieroglyphics down in Canyon, Craven Canyon. Those are examples of places that, yeah, we should protect, but to use a mineral withdrawal to just blanket the, twenty, forty thousand acres to stop a project, that, that's a, that's not what mineral withdrawals were, were intended for. And I also want to point out that mineral withdrawals don't just apply to gold. We don't know if it's just gold there, no one's explored. A mineral withdrawal would apply to all minerals, including, um, you know, aggregates, some aggregates out there.
Thank you, Quinn.
It's not just about gold, we don't know if that's all that's there. Silver comes with gold, it's used in solar panels.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, Mr. Drews.
Uh, relative to the EIS, uh, who, who would perform that?
You know, uh, in industry for, you know, an exploration project, the Forest Service usually hires a third-party consultant to complete that. Uh, the Forest Service is in charge of this study, so, you know, that, that's also a good question if that's going to be handled internally by the Black Hills National Forest, or if they have a team out of the regional office that conducts that, or if they, they're hiring someone. I don't know if Kathy's still here, would you have any ideas?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Quinn. Our last speaker is Carla Marshall.
Good morning, my name's Carla Ray Marshall. I'm an enrolled member of the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, I'm resident here in, um, the Chasapa. Um, this is the ancestral territory of the Ochetti Shacoi, the Lakota people. Um, and this, the eighteen sixty-eight Fort Leary Treaty supersedes the eighteen seventy-two mining law. Um, let's talk about spills reports. I am a sole intervenor of the Wharf Expansion Project, the only one. But I did research into the spills that the South Dakota State Department of Energy, uh, Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, they're always changing their names, so, but I am, um, I did reports of what happened at Wharf. What happened at Gilt Edge, what happened at the Home State, uh, Grizzly Gulch. So from the spills report, data from the state. There was a hundred and eighty-nine spills report from Wharf from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and three. And this is all in their data. I can't remember the exact amount, but some of these reports have naught in them, where they're supposed to have gallons or tons or cubic yards, whatnot. And there's a few of them in there that have naught, so we don't know the exact amount. However, um, I found out that in nineteen eighties, there was a six hundred and thirty-three thousand gallon spill at the Home State Grizzly Gulch. So back to Wharf, because I intervened, it went to the media, they had to have a more, a hearing about it. And Wharf is in violation of selenium contamination at Fox Bottom Creek. So when you consider, when you say something about, you know, this is a wasteland, I consider the wasteland that is being protected and not used for these big, huge mining projects, that, that's pristine, we have to keep it pristine. And right now they're, they're trying to, you know, um, makeshift, uh, beaver dams. So I think we've got, need to take into consideration, water is life, water needs to be protected here in the Chasapa.
Thank you. Thank you. I see one more, we're supposed to have a speaker request form, I'll let the, this gentleman speak. Please identify yourself for the record and then we'll close public comment.
My name is Marvin Camber. I'm against any water that flows into the Pactola Dam and down below. My, my granddad came here in eighteen eighty. Before there was Homestead. Which legally, illegally took a land away from this Lakota. So I'm against any proposal that allows mining, gold mining, any project that flows into the Pactola and the streams coming down from Pactola. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. With that, we will close public comment. We do have a motion on the floor.
Here.
Mr. Drews.
I'd like to offer a substantive motion of, uh, striking the word neutral and inserting the word opposed.
Uh, we have a motion.
Is, which one is that?
I'll second that.
Is that one? Is it in that one?
And there's been a motion in a second to strike the word.
Gotcha.
Neutral and oppose.
Opposed.
Inserting opposed instead of neutral.
Could you read that back to me, please? Cause we took some, but we have a motion in a second, uh, well, the Pennington County Board of County Commissioner supports, we were scratching that.
I've care of reading.
Chair, do you have it?
No, I was going to get it from, I was going to re-listen to it, I don't have it all, not the way you guys said, no.
I have a question. We're, we're working on that, Lloyd. I'd like to ask Scott Goffey a question.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second on, on the floor. I'm going to look, go ahead and let her answer.
Okay, Scott, I need some explanation. If approved, the request action would withdraw twenty thousand five seventy-four acres of national forest sys, system lands and Pactola Reservoir Rapid Creek Watershed in Pennington County, South Dakota, from settlement, sale, location or entry under public land laws, location and entry under the United States mining laws and leasing under the mining leasing and geomotherm, thermal leasing laws of up to twenty years, subject to valid existing rights. So is this just talking about the, the settlement, the sale and location of mining? Or is it any kind of development? Any kind of people living by it, anything like that?
I believe it's just specific to mining. But that's, that's the problem with this withdrawal. I, I don't know what the ramifications could be that come from this withdrawal. That's, that's kind of like you talked about the wilderness designation. It sounds great in theory until you find out your hand, your hands are really tied when it comes to management within a wilderness area.
Tell me about, your hands are tied, tied in the wilderness area. So people kind of understand what I'm talking about, because I was on your board for a while and then you explained, this is what happens when the Forest Service is not protected in a way that you have to thin the forest, you have to do certain things in order for it to be protected. So tell me, um, about wilderness areas and why that, um, would make a difference, kind of like this, turn it maybe into wastelands instead of areas that are protected by government, if you can believe that.
Sure, so a wilderness designation, you can't use any mechanical means of management within that wilderness area. Uh, so if.
It's not a wilderness area.
Okay.
We're talking.
Yeah, please, no, no comments from the audience.
So if, in a wilderness area, which this is not, we're talking to mining withdrawal. I'm just saying what the ramifications could be that we don't fully understand. And for example, a wilderness area, you, you're really hindered on what you can manage within a wilderness area. So if invasive, invasive weeds come in, you have to go in by either backpack means or horses to manage the weeds. Pine beetle comes in, you really can't manage the pine beetles. If fire breaks out in a wilderness area, they, they pretty much let it go. So there is, there is ramification. I don't know on the withdrawal, that's, that's why I would be hesitant on any type of resolution on expanded withdrawal. Because we don't know the full ramifications. I think we need to sit down with the Forest Service, our local district, and really fully understand what, what the impacts are.
Thank you, Scott. And Scott's been in, uh, our natural resources and reading past man for a long time. And I trust him. Why I trust him is because, don't shake your head, that's not nice. He actually looks into the information and the facts. I know that's funny to you, but that's not very funny when somebody does their work and this man works very hard. He does not have, have their people do his work for him, sir. So I trust him to know that when you're talking about some of the withdrawal and what you're talking about mining laws and you're talking about different things, it's not just about mining. We found that out many times when you guys did the first watersheds and what that meant to some of the farmers, the ranchers and the other people that were coming in. That leased some of that land and used some of that land and keep that land clean and what is, what is happening with that. So, um, again, um, I think there needs to be more information on this. I think it needs to be looked at better. Again, if it's going to protect it against contamination of mining, of course, we're for you. But that's not what this is saying. That's not the only thing it's saying. Federal government tells you one thing with wilderness areas and just like this watershed, it's going to be different.
Let's, let's get back to the motion on the floor.
We are. I, that's why I oppose it, is for that reason. I don't trust that federal government is going to follow through in a way that's going to be protected of the people. It's just going to be a certain type of area or mining stuff that, we don't know how that's going to affect it, we're guessing. And we have one mining, what, what, one mine at this point and the spills, I don't know. I didn't look up every spill, but I can tell you what kind of those spills are and did you let the other people talk about those spills and what those spills were. And humans, not mining company, are the biggest contaminator of watershed.
Okay, now, please, 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 let's, uh, Travis, did you get the motion figured out?
I, I got the motion figured out.
Could you read the motion for me, please?
I don't have the wording for it, but he said, uh, Commissioner Drews did make mention that she, that she had added the word neutral, but he just changed the word neutral, because I was reading it, I was like, I don't remember seeing neutral here.
No, there wasn't, so when we, the original motion was just to strike the paragraph, if I remember, there wasn't to be neutral. That's why I was trying to go through this to read, but there, we didn't make the, the, the motion as neutral. We, we stroke, struck the comment. So if we could read, find someone who could read that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Commissioner Lacroy, what I did, the board had initially approved the paragraph, or the letter is written with the second paragraph and the first, second sentence in the first paragraph stuck out. So it will read, and this is my proposal. While the Pennington County Board of Commissioners supports responsible mining in the Black Hills to support technology in our national defense, the integrity and longevity of our drinking water source remains a priority. And this is what I propose to add, the county is opposed to the proposed withdrawal of twenty thousand five hundred seventy-four acres from the Pactola Reservoir Rapid Creek Watershed at this time.
Yes.
And so the original motion would have been that first part is a priority and then it skipped down and says, with that said.
And that remains the same.
And that still remains the same in there.
And that, and so that would, okay, Mr. Laster has the floor.
You know, I heard all the testimony and I want to point out something, um, just so that there's not any confusion. I, I do believe this board is very conscious about water and clean water. Uh, for those who don't know, I'll bring you up to speed. My land is impacted by the Air Force, uh, firefighting, A triple F firefighting phone. So it's no doubt that I do support clean water. I, I support it in, um, the cleanup. What I will tell you is the feds aren't helping out. What I'll tell you is the state's not helping out, they just said, don't eat the animals, okay? So I'm going a little sidetracked so that you understand. You want to put this under federal control or federal access or federal whatever, um, you're going to have a problem. Uh, I'm bringing something to the Board of Commissions on June twenty-ninth to ask for the local government, which is actually in this resolution, that the, the local government should have control over that kind of stuff. And so that we can hopefully clean up what's along from the base out to the Cheyenne River. So, so understand, I believe we need to have clean water, but it comes down to the local uh, governmental entities taking control of that and, and establishing it and, and making sure it's done. Not leaving it to the feds or the EPA, because the EPA and the feds are going to sit on this for thirty years. And that's what they said at their public meetings. Watch their public meetings and you'll see, they don't have, they said it's going to take thirty years for that cleanup. I think the county will be involved and adamant, uh, and adamant, what's the word I'm looking for? Adamantly involved to make sure that the water, if it does get contaminated, as in the case of, um, the, uh, airbase, hopefully we'll do what we need to do to get the data to see if that, how bad that water is and how it should, how it impacts our residents. So don't think that we don't care about clean water. Uh, but we need the, the public to also be there whenever we're asking for support to show that we need these entities to clean it up after we show that it's impacted.
Please, okay, one more time, could you read the motion with the opposition wording there?
While the Pennington County Board of Commissioners supports responsible mining in the Black Hills to support technology in our national defense, the integrity and longevity of our drinking water sources remains a priority. The county is opposed to the proposed withdrawal of twenty thousand five hundred seventy-four acres from the Pactola Reservoir Rapid Creek Watershed at this time. With that said, as our, it is our understanding, the withdrawal request was issued at the national level after the local Forest Service had conducted the NEPA process and found no significant impacts from the proposed exploratory mining proposal. The Pennington County Board of Commissioners supports, supports local control of our federal lands and would expect any future management decision and our proposed withdrawals be initiated by the Black Hills National Forest with consultation from state and local officials.
So my understanding of that motion is we're opposing.
The withdrawal.
The with, withdrawal. Does everybody understand that? Okay, any final comments before we go to a vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that besides water, we're also talking about the integrity of natural resources and, and the cultural value of the area understudy.
Okay, um, I'm a little torn, I liked the first motion myself. And trying to stay out of making a, a choice on both, but that's my comments. With that, I will go to a roll call vote.
Haddock.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Nay.
Drews.
Aye.
Lassiter.
Aye.
Lacroy.
No. Motion carries three to two. Thank you, I would probably look for a motion and for the commissioner to take a short break.
So move.
Move by Lassiter, second by Haggard calling favorite, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. We're just waiting on Travis before we get started, but before we get started, I will mention that items K and L are recommendations for continuance. So I just wanted to pass that on. And we do have quite a bit, uh, of other ones that have a continuation motion on there. So I just wanted to make, if you're waiting for K and L, I just wanted to make sure I informed you of that.
Boyd, you want to do a reminder of speaker request forms?
Yes, and if you want to speak on, we're getting ready to, we're, we're going to have a presentation uh, on Buffalo Gap and then we got some other items to go through, a considerable amount. But if you have a speaker request on any planning items or any other items, please allow the speaker request form and turn them into Holly on the right side of the, or left side of the dais, my left. Excuse me. I think we could. I think we could, I think Travis will be back here in a minute. We could start, start the meeting. And we'll go to item number 13, which is the USDA Forest Service. He's here. Buffalo Gap, uh, Gap National Grasslands Proposal for Permit Prairie Dog Hunting Order, Public Input and Comment Period, Mr. Myron Williams. This is a presentation, and there is no actions on this today.
Oh, okay.
So it's just, it's a presentation
Resolution proposed that we'd like to have you resolve.
Information to the commission and to the public. And then, uh, we'll get with, uh, within the next meeting, that the next meeting, we could either have something, if there's a direction to have something drafted, we could. If we want more time to think about it, the commission would do that, too.
Whatever. Um, I'm Myron Williams from Wall. I'm a member of the Association of National Grasslands, and I'm vice chairman of the Eastern Pennington Grazing District. We have an issue with prairie dogs in our area, and it has to do with the black-footed ferret. Um, I am asking my associate, Mr. Lance Russell from Hot Springs, who's our executive director of Association National Grasslands, who made this presentation to, uh, the Fall River County Commissioners, and they passed it. And we were asking for your endorsement. Uh, it says Fall River on here, but it's similar. That's a proposal to 406,000 acres that can't be hunted on. And with that, I would like to turn the rest of the presentation over to Mr. Russell. He can talk about the legal issues with it under the Dingle Law and some things like that for your further explanation. But I do have a PowerPoint that I want to save a minute or two at the end of our presentation to show you that.
Okay.
So if, um, we don't, I don't think we're gonna need a lot of time, but we we do want to be thorough.
Okay, thank you, Myron. Mr. Lance Russell?
Good morning.
Morning, Lance.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm both the state's attorney for Fall River in Oglala, Lakota County, and also in private practice. And I represent the Association of National Grasslands, which essentially, um, consists of the permities, the the ranchers that utilize the the national grasslands in five states, including South Dakota. Uh, the issue here and why it was, why we were interested from the standpoint of Fall River County is because when the Canata Basin situation was in full, full force up here, the the national forest proposed to create the same thing in Fall River County that you have in the Canata Basin. And there, they set aside thousands of acres in northeastern Fall River County near Smithwick to create another Canata Basin. So of course, we got excited because I was state's attorney down there years ago, over 20 years ago, and then 12 years in the legislature. But the newest proposal, the Dingle Act was passed in 2019. And it was to force the federal government to keep these lands open for hunting, except there's a provision where they can be closed under the act. But I want to read to you one, one, uh, part of that that I think is very important. And this is in section 4103 of the Dingle Act. In making a designation under the paragraph one to close, the secretary's concern shall designate the smallest area for the least amount of time that is required for public safety administration or compliance with applicable laws. The smallest area and for the slightest time. So what happened here was, and we have 60 days to make comment. 30 days have run. You've got until the end of July in order to make comment. Uh, and we would ask that you make comment in some form. Uh, we do have that resolution from Fall River County that I can get to you, that you could use. If you want to do a motion or or whatever you'd like to do, that's fine by us. We're not married to any particular resolution or language. But they have proposed over 106,000 acres for a permanent closure of any shooting. Now, the reason that concerns us is in the 2008 amendment that Pennington County helped force on the Forest Service because of the problems in the Canata Basin, there is a provision in there where to protect the adjacent private landowners, there can be shooting in the boundary management zone. The Forest Service has not allowed shooting, even though they provided the the opportunity at some point in the future. If they ever wanted to, they could change it and allow, uh, shooting in that boundary management zone to protect the private landowners adjacent to the Canata Basin. And up north of Badlands National Park, there's also an area. The situation, uh, that we find ourselves in is, one, permanent, in perpetuity. And two, that, um, it's 106,000 acres. They did a successful introduction of the black-footed ferret, one of the most successful in the country, in the Wind Cave National Park, just north of Hot Springs, on 2,200 acres. And they want to wall off 106,500 some here in Pennington County. The reason why it's concerning to Fall River County is because whatever happens here in the future could happen to us. And quite frankly, based upon the mismanagement and the plague, the plague came out of Nebraska. It was actually on the Oglala National Grasslands and then came through the Pine Reginian Reservation onto the Buffalo Gap and came through Fall River County, Custer County, and into the Canata Basin and wiped out their population. In 2000, the Fall River County Commission made the comment that if you do not manage your prairie dog population, you are going to have the first Sylvatic plague epidemic, epizootic, in the state of South Dakota. And that was in 2000. In 2008, that's exactly what happened. And it almost wiped out their entire ferret population also. So, um, with that, I know that you guys, that this this commission is well aware of the issue of the federal mismanagement on the Buffalo Gap National Grasslands. And we just want to make sure that they can issue temporary orders under this same statute. We're asking you to come out and say, hey, look, we'd rather you issue temporary orders than have a permanent ban. And in 2026, the Forest Service already plans to do a new EIS for the entire Buffalo Gap National Grasslands in the Oglala in Nebraska. And at that time, we're hoping that based upon all of the best available science, that they won't put in a permanent closure like this calls for. But anyway, i- it's just ironic that this statute was developed for the purpose of making sure that hunting is acceptable on federal lands. And they've used it now as a sword instead of a shield in order to permanently prevent these ranchers that are next door to protect their private interest. So with that, we'll take any questions that you have. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Sure.
So Lance, what was then date of that public comment period? July 28?
It'll be the 26th, I believe, is the the final day to comment.
26.
And I can provide you the link and all that kind of business so that you can, you know, and it could be as simple as a motion. But if you would consider
Okay.
If you would consider a resolution, we would be greatly appreciative.
I just want to know which time.
Chairman.
Uh, I got Mr. Drews first.
First of all, thanks for for coming and presenting this. Uh, I've read the resolution for Fall River County. What, very well written. We probably know who that author is, I suspect, so. But, uh, so we appreciate that. Uh, secondly, I I totally agree. I mean, uh, again, it's a, it's a matter of allowing, you know, give an inch and they take a foot. And, uh, prairie dogs are not a friend of most of the ranchers. And so, uh, I mean, I I guess there are a few that probably, uh, put up with them. But, uh, yeah, you can't have that. Uh, black-footed ferret is, yeah, something that's, uh, fairly incredible animal. Uh, but at the, at the same time.
Very fragile.
Yeah, yeah, very fragile. So, and I think that, uh, for the most part, uh, the locals, for sure, uh, can recognize the difference between those animals.
We thought it was a good deal when they proposed it on the Mickelson administration. If anything, if we eat prairie dogs, it's a good deal? Not.
Yeah.
That was total oversight on our part, sorry.
So anyway, I'm I'm gonna be supportive of bringing back, uh, that resolution or something very similar to it for us to adopt. And I would agree to that.
Before I go to Deb, I'll I'll just explain what I said before. No action, the action they can do is is make a motion to have it drafted to be brought back to the next meeting. That's why I asked when the end date is.
Why I brought it to you, sir, was because of the deadline.
Okay, Miss Deb.
I'm in favor as well of doing this. Again, federal government stepping in, just exactly what I said earlier, and ends up being a problem, whether it be in the Forest Service, um, areas for timber and different areas or mismanagement in grassland area. So to trust the federal government that they're gonna do the right thing by the people, that's why I said on the the resolution on the last one saying for this. Um, now we're having to go back because it was mismanaged and there was things that were causing a lot of issues. Well, this is not my first rodeo at this. I've been in here about 16 years. And federal government, and not, I don't hate federal government. I just think a lot of times there's not due process um, on some of their issues that they have enough to make sure and ensure that the people are protected like they're supposed to be. The last one we just talked about was the EIS. I totally agree with that. If they're gonna do stuff that they're gonna do in the Forest Service on grassland and anything, those are huge. So one thing the mining guy did say was to do a EIS and see what the main issues were. That made sense to me. So if we're gonna do something, let's do it right. And I think locally or even as county, we could do that kind of stuff. And we're more protective, I believe, in a sense, to make sure things are done right. And you guys are doing this right, and you are protecting the people by having to go back to the federal government and do this. So I am in support of this, um, because it does help, um, your district and it helps all our districts if we, um, take care of the issue now because we don't need to keep having epidemics in different areas from mismanagement.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Sir, I'd make a motion to direct staff to draft, um, a similar statement as Fall River County's for us to review and and, uh, take action on at the next meeting.
Sir.
Motion made by Laster, seconded by Mr. Drews to have him draft a similar letter as to Fall River and bring back to, it's gonna be the July 5th meeting? July 5th meeting? Any further discussion? Saying not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I show this?
Oh, yes.
Because of the fact that we don't want Canata Basin to show up like it did in Sage Creek. So if you could go ahead and make that presentation, I'd appreciate it.
We were on a roll, and when I'm on a roll.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't mean to interrupt. But I want, it's important to see this because your county is spending some money right now, or somebody is. The county's doing a lot of work taking the dirt out of the ditch. And I don't know whether you guys want to see. I want you to see this moonscape.
We are having those issues, sir.
And I think we had a comment from our highway person also.
Calling it blow dirt. Even in the wintertime, we had that blow dirt in Pennington County. So it's not just.
What causes an accident this winter down there because of the good sea.
Yep.
Is that buffalo arenas down there?
Oh, the buffalo, that's why the fences keep the buffalo in, but it don't keep the prairie dogs out. And that's like after, that was in last year when it greened up. Now it's just creeping, Jen. The sun took this, uh, tractor through there in May before we had a three-hand train.
Joe, how often you have to go clean those out? Or how soon do they get filled in after you clean them out? Maybe that's the better question.
I think you can turn the volume down.
That's good. Finally, I'm doing another 106,000 acres that looks like that with the wrong kind of management. And, um, is the county, uh, Joe, are you, is the county paying to clean up that mess? Because I know they're down there working, trying out with trucks, hauling that dirt to another location, which is quite an expense, and it has to do with management on federal lands. And the park is blaming the endangered species and the fishing wildlife for not being able to control prairie dogs because they can't get authority to do it. And so, and I've even taken that stuff to DC and nothing happens. But with the involvement that they have down here taking care of this road, they haven't got access or the ability to send any help and help us with our county roads that need bladed because of this project, so.
Thank you, Myron. Joe, do you have any comments?
Uh, good, good morning, good afternoon. I don't know what it is anymore. Um, what was the question you had first?
After y'all clean those out, about how soon do they get filled in? Or how often do y'all need to clean them out?
This really kind of depends on our wind and our our weather forecast. I know early on in April, I think we cleaned them out. Um, and it was back, looked like we didn't do anything about two weeks later. Um, right now, we're doing a little more extensive stuff as Myron, uh, explained there. Um, we're hauling it, uh, we have worked with the park. We had a a meeting early on with the park to say, hey, look, this is your guys' dirt, right? You guys need to do something with it. Well, you can about imagine how that went over, kind of like a lead balloon. So we opted to to do this with our forces because we do have a about a, probably, by the time it's all said and done, three quarters of a million dollars is what we're gonna spend on Sage Creek, um, when it's all said and done. So we opted to go in there with our county forces. The the park has been sending people and equipment weekly as they can to help aid in hauling the blow dirt, um, to another location. Um, we originally were asking, hey, can we just put this blow dirt right over, uh, you know, 100 yards from here? You know, it's your dirt, why don't you take it back? Um, and that was a a hard no. I think the the closest spot that, uh, the the park gave us to haul this blow dirt to was 32 miles one way. So it was like 64 mile round trip. So obviously, that was not feasible. Um, we ended up working with the local landowner that had a stock dam that they wanted filled in. So that's where this dirt is going. It's about, I believe, nine miles one way to to haul this. So, um, we have been working with the the park on this exact same issue. I handed all of you guys some some information here before the 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 meeting. Since 2013, I believe, is kind of, it's probably preceded that. But this is, 2013 is kind of when Heine started working on it. Um, and I'm sure there's stuff in our files that was just the stuff this morning when I noticed this was on the agenda that that we could pull up. But, uh, it's been a longstanding issue with the park. Um, but yeah, I think we need to do something. Um, otherwise, it's going to continue to be an issue. And and once that that Sage Creek Road is hard-surfaced, it's gonna be even more of a of a crash hazard because of the speeds. People will be driving probably faster because it'll be a smoother road.
Thank you, Joe. We did make a motion and asked to do the draft. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Lance and Myron. We'll see you around July 5th. Next, we have item number 14 from the auditor.
Didn't vote on it.
Motion.
I think we voted yet.
I thought you did.
Did we?
We voted.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I I I double-checked before. That's why I got up because I wanted to double-check.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Keeping us on track.
Keep them, keep them on our schedule. Kara, did they?
I don't remember hearing it. But I I.
You better do it just because if I'm not remembering correctly, I thought you did.
The motion on the floor was to have staff draft a resolution similar to Fall River's County, bring it back to the July 5th County Commission meeting for recommendation or approval. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we checked yourself. Now on to item 14, items from monitors, surplus property tax deed auction.
Honoring Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. We're gearing up to have a tax deed auction. And so I have the list before you, um, to be declared surplus for the purpose of auctioning off. And we're looking at holding that on August 17th.
At ten AM on Thursday?
Yes.
Is there, somebody want to read, read the tax ideas? Mr. Drews.
Uh, move to declare the following properties, a surplus property for the purpose of placing them up for auction at the tax deed auction scheduled for ten AM on Thursday, August seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Property ideas nine zero one four, four four three six seven, four five six four six, five five three four two, five seven eight five eight, six two, six two nine, eight nine nine one, one one eight five six four six nine oh, four zero eight eight five two three one one, I'm sorry, two three one two two, nine zero zero seven, nine zero two two, four five four nine eight, four six six eight seven, four three two two seven, eight four three, four three two two four, three one five nine zero, nine zero zero three, and five seven zero nine five.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lassiter. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Now we go to new retail of on-off sale malt beverage.
Yes, we have, we're looking for approval of a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for No Bad Days Tap Wagon under Jedidiah Parish and Michelle Stark.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I come to the commission for motion.
Move to approve new, new retail on-off malt beverage and South Dakota Farms wine license for No Bad Days Tap Wagon under Jedidiah Parish and Michael Stark and Sobos LLC under Alexis and Nathan Sobowski.
Same.
Motion by Hickok, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item C. Ms. Cindy.
Think I have the, the wrong one on top. I apologize for that. So this one is for the, um, South Dakota, uh, Wine Insider License for No Bad Days Tap Wagon.
Chairman.
Okay, new retail on-off sale Wine Insider License for No Bad Days Tap Wagon. Miss Hickok.
Move to approve the new retail on-off sale Wine Insider License for No Bad Days Tap Wagon under Jedidiah Parish and Michael Stark.
Second.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Lassiter. Any public comment? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next week, thank you, Cindy.
You.
Next we come up to items from the Highway Department. Uh, Superintendent Joe Miller, uh, item number A is to authorize purchase of both diesel and gas products, Wall Division.
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, we took care of the first two and our other divisions, uh, last, at our last meeting, but, uh, since we were short, we still have to, uh, get, uh, MG or Wall, uh, taking care of this meeting. So.
Thank you, Joe. I will be abstaining from this, but I would look for a motion from the, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Mr. Drews.
I have moved to authorize the Highway Department to purchase bulk diesel and gas products for the Wall Division from state contract list for contract number one seven seven five four from MG Oil, Rapid City, South Dakota. Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes with one abstention from this, from Mr. LaCora. Item B, authorization to advertise let twenty-three bridge rehabilitation. Joe.
Yeah, so this is, uh, authorization to advertise and let our twenty twenty-three big applications that we were successful on. Um, and then also one other one that we were not successful on that we feel needs to get done in twenty twenty-four, also just due to the condition. Um, so the, the two that we were successful on big grants are Reservoir Road, uh, grant amount was two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars plus, uh, construction engineering grant in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty. Uh, the other one is Thunderhead Falls, which the grant amount was three hundred and five thousand, two hundred dollars. And the construction engineering for that one is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty. Total grant dollars in twenty twenty-three that were awarded, um, around six hundred thousand dollars, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars just in twenty twenty-three. Uh, that would bring our total to about two, two point eight million dollars that we've received, um, in big grant funding since we've been able to apply the last three years. Um, we were not successful on Norris Peak Bridge, um, and continue, and to continue with the bridge work that we're doing, uh, we're choosing to use local dollars to fund this one. Uh, total cost estimated around a half million dollars.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any public comment on this? None, I go to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
I heard Mr. Roskinet.
Move to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let bids for two thousand twenty-three bridge rehabilitations for bridges fifty-two dash four sixty dash three twenty-nine and fifty-two dash three one six dash three one seven and fifty-two dash three oh eight dash two nine eight.
Second.
Motion was made by Roskinet, seconded by Lassiter. Mr. Drews, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item C, Joe.
Item C is, uh, to authorize the purchase of a new tandem axle truck off of our Pennington County's twenty twenty-two bid. Uh, so we bid this truck last year. It came in with a price of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, we have reached out to Floyd's and they are going to allow us and extend that pricing for another year. So we feel that is prudent to save tax dollars. We're going to up, obtain the same pricing for this year's truck. Uh, lead time's still about twelve months. Um, so we, we won't receive that truck till sometime next year, um, hopefully between September, October, um, of next year. So.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I go to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize the Highway Department to purchase one new two, two thousand twenty-five model tandem axle truck from Floyd's Truck Center, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars off the Pennington County twenty twenty-two contract number two two oh two, uh, oh six eight.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item D.
Item D is a application for the South Dakota D A, D A N R. I still can't say D A N R. Um, Volkswagen Truck Rebate Program application. So this was, uh, set up, I think, four years ago, uh, after the Volkswagen debacle. Um, there's a substantial amount of money that was allocated to each state. Uh, we've applied for this grant the last two years and we have been successful. Uh, there's, I think there, this is round seven and I, I think that seven or eight. There might be one more round after this. Uh, we would like to apply for the grant again this year. There's an opportunity to, to save thirty-five percent of the purchased truck. Uh, but we learned this year that we can actually, instead of just the bare truck, we can actually apply for, uh, all the accessories. So the snowplow wing, the, the hydraulics, all of that stuff will be a part of that thirty-five percent. So it ends up being about, uh, thirty-five percent, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So.
Thanks, Joe. Was there any public comment? Seeing none, I go to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
So Joe, that just, uh, the truck that'll get disabled, is there any value in that at all?
I'm trying to remember which truck we're going to, um, I believe it's the one out of Hill City and the frame is, is in pretty bad shape. Um, there is, I mean, to a local contractor, probably some value, um, but it won't be long before the frame will disable it and it won't be roadworthy at all.
I just wondered what the procedure was to, uh, do with the vehicle after we, you know, get, do the application and get the new.
Essentially, it's a motion of the board to surplus it, um, for the purpose of disposal. And then we take it over to Pacific Steel, does a lot of them. I don't know if you remember several years ago, I think the first round of this, the school district was successful in obtaining like thirty grants for their school buses. There's a ton of school buses parked over at the, uh, Pacific Steel there. So Pacific Steel will document it and give us all the documentation we need to, to disable it. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions? And look for a motion.
Move to authorize the Highway Department to submit a truck replacement application through the SDD A N R Volkswagen Truck Rebate Program.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item E, Joe.
Item E is authorization to purchase, uh, one new motor grader. Um, this request is, uh, to purchase a new motor grader at the price of four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-six. Uh, lead time for graders continue to be, you know, six to eight months out. Um, speaking to, to Wade, our salesman with RDO, who's in the audience, if you do have any questions for him. Um, you know, predicting, uh, probably January, February of this next year, which would be kind of perfect timing. This, this last year's was kind of a, uh, almost bad timing because it was right into our blading season. So getting those new blades and switching stuff out, stuff around, um, getting them in January, February, we're, we're flirting with snow, but we feel that we can, you know, we've got enough other equipment that if it does happen to land during a big snowstorm, we should be able to, to accommodate that. Um, RDO is predicting another increase this fall. They're extending purchasing off of our Minnesota State bid for this. Um, and we're starting to see the, the benefits of trading these in while they're still under warranty or still seven years or newer. Our twenty-sixteens will go out of warranty in two thou, or in August of this year. Um, and RDO has still offered a trade value of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, last year, I believe our trade-in value for our twenty-elevens was, uh, seventy or seventy-four thousand dollars. So almost double, uh, trade-in value. So we're getting a lot more back for our trade-in values, which means, um, less that taxpayers have to pick up for those blades. Um, uh, one of these days I'll have to sit down and pencil out what it costs per hour to, to operate one of those, um, with the purchase costs. Oh, let's see here. What else do I have? Um, we did look into extending the warranty for our blades, uh, that, the twenty-sixteens that'll go out of warranty in August. Um, John Deere isn't willing to go past the seven-year mark, but RDO did do some work and, and go find another company that was willing to put, uh, an extended warranty on them for, I believe it was ten or twelve thousand dollars. After some conversations with our, our shop foreman, I don't think that that's a wise use of county taxpayer dollars. The one will only be out of warranty for about, about a year or about three months. And then the other ones about a year and probably six months or eighteen months. And they're, those blades are now in Rapid City. They might see a hundred and fifty hours in the, in the Rapid City hour, Rapid, Rapid City divisions per year. So, you know, the one blade, you're probably looking at three hundred hours, worst case scenario, in the next year. So our risk is pretty minimal there. Um, and then after twenty twenty-five, we'll have all of our blades under warranty, which was the whole goal in twenty nineteen when we started this. So we're, we're finally starting to see some fruits of our labor for that. So.
Thank you, Joe.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any public comment? Any, go back, Mr. Hickok.
Move to authorize the Highway Department to purchase one new twenty twenty-four John Deere seven, read my paper I marked over it, seven seven two G motor grader from RDO Equipment Company, Rapid City, South Dakota, in amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven forty-six, in the State of Minnesota Cooperative Purchase Team Venture Program. Contact number two one nine eight four six.
Thank you.
Moved by Hickok, seconded by Mr. Drews. Any further discussion? Mr. Roskinet.
One question, Joe, how many hours is, uh, the one that we're going to trade in? How many hours is on that?
I think they're thirty-eight hundred hours. I mean, one's at thirty-five, one's at thirty-eight. So we've got two twenty-sixteens and one's, I believe, thirty-five hundred and one's at thirty-eight hundred.
So then the term of hours, where do you lose your warranty?
Uh, seven thousand.
Okay.
Or seven years, seven thousand hours. So, uh, once we start getting into the, the, everything is under warranty, we'll start looking at, once we get, we'll put our hours, well, in New Underwood are really mainly where they get a lot of hours because they have the most power to maintain. So, um, once they get out to those five, six thousand hour marks, we'll probably rotate them to Rapid City to, to keep them under that seven thousand. We keep a pretty close eye on that stuff. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Moment of personal prejudice?
Sure.
So Joe made mention that, uh, so far we've received two point eight million in big dollars, uh, for bridge projects. And I just want to remind the, uh, the skeptics of a few years ago, when we were discussing putting the wheel tax on, uh, we kept hearing that you, Pennington County won't receive any of those dollars. Most of those dollars are available in Eastern South Dakota. We've been very successful in receiving a, a portion of those dollars. And the only way we receive those dollars is by having a wheel tax in Pennington County. So just a reminder that it was a, it was a good move on our part, I think, at that time and remains to be a good move.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Next on our items is item sixteen and it's from, item from Human Resources and I'll recognize Director Carol Bancroft.
You don't look like Carol. You have a stand-in.
Oh.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners Laura Retsel, State's Attorney. Um, Ms. Bancroft has asked that I appear on my own as this is my specific recommendation. So one of the things that I talk to all of you a lot about when I took this position is the need for transparency in the State's Attorney's Office. And word got out quickly that transparency was going to be the state of affairs at the State's Attorney's Office. And I have been inundated with media requests and requests by the public for information. And I want to answer all of those. But I found that it takes a considerable amount of my time, time that I should be spending prosecuting people and, and running the office and, and doing other things. So I actually found an FTE. The Attorney General had been housing a legal secretary in the State's Attorney's Office for a number of years. And then they were giving us a stipend for part of that funding. The thought being that the Attorney General was taking a number of our drug cases. So we were funding a legal secretary in their Rapid City office. They are now directly funding that position. So I have an open FTE position in my office that I would like to convert into a public information officer. So I've detailed, it's in your packet, the things that I would like this person to do. They would be a lot like Helene Duhamel for the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, doing web content, answering all those media requests or coordinating interviews for things that I needed to answer directly, answering public inquiries. Our, we get probably about between ten and twelve emails a week from pu, public people asking questions about things that are happening in our office. They could also help with public awareness campaigns and newsletters. They could help me with budget narratives, internal communications. I've detailed a whole list of things that they could do. I have the open FTE line. I have the money to pay this person. I currently have five open positions at the State's Attorney's Office, so the money's not an issue. I'm just asking you to give me a new position, a public information officer.
Well, thank, thank you, Laura. And I will say I've gotten feedback from the sheriff and, uh, Don, the police chief, that, uh, they really appreciated the, the contact or the information that you were conveying on, trying to keep them all updated and stuff, among other things in your department. So I did want to pass that on before I go to the commission. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that because just keeping the police department and the sheriff's office informed of what's happening with their cases takes a considerable amount of time.
Yes. I'll go to Deb and then I'll go to Mr. Drews.
There's a couple of questions, Laura. Um, so you had, take the state secretary and you don't have to pay that anymore. How much was our portion to pay the state secretary?
It was about thirty thousand dollars. So we're not rece, we're, we're receiving a portion of that this year up until the point that they assumed that, which I think was in May. And then I built it into my budget for next year.
Okay, so I'll just tell you, I was going to suggest that you submit it during budget. But, um, because you have some of the funding and you're down, and this is a huge thing for transparency and public notice. Um, Helene does some, people think, uh, what does Helene actually do? Um, anything that's put out by, a lot of times the sheriff's office or the police department, they have a person that does that as well. It's huge for the community to know what happens. And state attorneys, um, I'll just tell you, I haven't even been in public office here. A lot of times know a lot what's going on unless it's heard in the news. So it's nice to get emails and, and things from the sheriff's office and the police department of things that are happening. So that being considered, like I said, um, I thought I was going to say submit it during the budget, but I think it's important enough and you also have some of the funding to start that in twenty twenty-four. So I think, um, you'll build it into your budget and I think it'll be a positive for your department. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Drews.
I would, uh, uh, agree with what Commissioner Hickok has had to say. And the other thing I, I find very enlightening is that you work this through the process of going through HR, uh, before bringing it to us. So I really appreciate you doing that and, uh, having, having all the, basically the eyes dotted by the time I got here. So thank you. And I think it's a good move on, on your part.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Drews.
Motion.
Ms. Hickok.
Motion to move to approve the public information officer position for State's Attorney's Office at DBMC forty-one base rate at. Office at DBMC forty-one base rate at twenty-nine fifteen an hour, and authorize HR to update the position listing on file.
Second. Did, was that Drews or Laster? Okay, moved by Haggar, seconded by Laster.
You both look the same.
Okay.
Settle down over there.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Now we come to a time for, uh, public comment. Any items from public comment? I have no speaker request forms. I'm gonna read that, what public company is, comment is, just for, for record. Public comment is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of the Commission on Policies and Issues Affect the County Government and its Functions. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. Have no speaker request forms. Do we still need to take a short recess? Okay, we're gonna have to take a short recess to get ready for the Board of Adjustment.
We don't need to. She did that during her last one.
Oh, she said her stuff's not.
We just need to load the computer quickly. It'll be in just a minute.
So we just, we'll just hold tight and try to get through it. Okay, we're gonna wait a sec. And I'll just reiterate, uh, now, now we're going into planning commission items, uh, and the commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete speaker request form located at the bookshelves, uh, in the back of the chair, Mr. Return to Commission Manager Holly, and he's located at the lower right side of the dais.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Drews.
I would move that we go into the Board of Adjustments.
Moved to, and seconded to go into the Board of Adjustments hearing by Drews and Laster. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item A.
Megan Talmadge Planner. Agenda item A is a variance to reduce the setback from twenty-five feet to nineteen feet to the southern property line to bring it, an existing structure into compliance. The applicant is Josh and Carrie Chamberlain. The lot size is three point zero-two acres. Their current zoning is rural residential district, and the existing land use is residential. There is one hundred-year flood plan on the property and floodway. When considering variances, staff takes a two-prong approach. The two prongs are listed on the screen. Um, this is an existing residence that was constructed in two thousand and four. The original building permit had the house in a different place, and at this point, we're trying to bring it into compliance so that he can submit a building permit. Um, so staff recommends denial, but however, if the board disagrees, staff recommends three conditions.
Is there any questions of Megan from the commission? This is, you're trying to get it into compliance, it's already built, it's?
Yep.
Okay.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggar.
I'll move to approve based on that the house is already built. They're gonna need this variance in order to move forward. Um, so, um, with the three conditions, I approve.
Motion was made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roskodak.
You have a question, though.
Mr. Roskodak.
So, uh, the original building permit, is that part of this packet?
I did not include that in this packet.
Okay. What, so the original building permit, how far does it show the house from the property line?
It shows the house up here. Um, so I believe that their approach permit is more along here, and it had the house listed about here.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Thanks, Megan. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Megan, you doing them all today?
Uh, not all of them, just a couple.
Item B was, uh, variance VA twenty-three oh-nine.
Yeah, so agenda item B, it's loading up, but is a variance to reduce setbacks to a telecommunication tower from the one-point-one times height to a hundred-nine or two, is to reduce the setback of the one-point-one times tower height for a telecommunication tower. Uh, the applicant is Pennington County Fire and Highway. Their agent is Ted Rufflet. Um, the location is twenty-two seventeen-two Creighton Road. The lot size is one acre, and their current zoning is agriculture. Um, the existing tower is being moved to the southern part of the property, um, where it will not meet setbacks. Um, but there is an existing tower on the water storage facility that they are, um, replacing. So this is just a variance for the tower placed elsewhere.
Chairman.
Any staff recommendations?
Oh, staff recommends approval of this variance.
Ms. Haggar.
Is there anybody that, um, lives close to this tower?
Um, I think that the closest residence was about a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Staff recommendations, is there any public comment? I go to the commission.
Move for approval.
Moved by, uh, Roskodak. Seconded by Drews to approve with staff recommendations.
Three conditions.
With three conditions. Uh, topographical and sitting constraints on the subject properties. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item D. Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item C is variance VA twenty-three dash ten. The applicant landowner is Hubert and Shelley Abell. Location of property is one-three-four-six-zero Rockwood, Rockwood Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, the county takes a two-pronged approach when look, when considering variances. A lot of those are on the screen. Uh, staff did find, staff did not find that the variance would run counter to public interest, and staff did find that there is a special condition on the property that would warrant a variance. Uh, so the applicant is requesting to construct a detached garage in his front yard, ten feet from the property line. As you can see by this map, there's quite a considerable amount of drainage over here that limits buildable area, slope for the drainage that if the structure was put here would impact this drainage. And then as well, and cistern and drain field are back here, so if you were to build a structure back here, you'd have to reroute all of this and change it out. Uh, so staff did feel that siding does play a role, um, in the requesting of this variance, so staff is recommending approval of variance VA twenty-three dash ten with three conditions.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Haggar, seconded by Laster, and that was with the three conditions and the reasons of topographical and sitting constraints on the subject property. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I'd look for a motion to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
We have one more.
One more.
There's one more. D. Uh, item D. I'm game.
Oh. I marked out the wrong one. Okay, Cody.
Uh, so agenda item D is variance VA twenty-three dash eleven. It's to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to ten feet. Uh, this is the same exact property, uh, so as you can see, uh, there's a ten-foot setback request over here as well. He wouldn't meet the setback for here. Uh, over here on the neighbor's property, this is where the neighbor's drain field's at. So no other structure could be built here unless the apple, or unless the neighbor moved his drain field, which in this area with this soils is unlikely. Uh, so with the same reasons as the previous request, staff does find that siding and topography does play a role, uh, in limiting buildable area on the property. So staff is recommending approval of variance VA twenty-three dash eleven with three conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskodak.
Move to approve variance VA twenty-three dash ten with three conditions because of topographical and sitting constraints on the subject property.
That needs to read eleven, twenty-three dash eleven. Has typical Africa error in that motion.
Oh, and that, because it says twenty-three-ten, but it's actually twenty-three-eleven.
Yep.
So you meant twenty-three-eleven.
Twenty-three-eleven.
Yep.
Correct. Second.
Seconded by, uh, Mr. Drews. Any public comment? Any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Move to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews to adjourn the Board of Adjustments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, on to the next one. So Meg, oh, excuse me, Megan Talmadge Planner. Agenda item E is a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential. The applicant is Adam and, Adam Weaver and Sharon Holt Weaver. Their agent is Sarah Cheddar. Uh, the lot size that they're wanting to rezone is point seven-four acres, and the current zoning is rural residential district. The existing land use is residential, and there's no special flood hazard in the area.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would suggest we follow the Planning Commission recommendation and move to continue the comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash oh-six to the July fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster to continue. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Item F.
Um, agenda item F is a rezone to the same property, um, to rezone from rural residential to low-density, uh, low-density residential district. Um, seeing, Adam Weaver and Sharon Holt are the applicants, Sarah Cheddar is the agent. It is the same point seven-four acres. Uh, the current zoning is rural residential, existing land use is residential, and no flood hazard area.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make the same motion here, uh, following the Planning Commission recommendation to continue rezone RZ twenty-three dash zero-nine to the July fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item G, looks like we have, uh, two of these back-to-back that are gonna be continued on.
Correct. Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item G is planned unit development overlay twenty-three dash zero-six to allow recreational resort. The applicant is Horse Creek LLC. The agent is Garrett Kuchenbecker. Location is two-three-five-seven-zero, Highway three-eighty-five. It is eighteen point zero-seven acres, currently zoned commercial district. Existing land use is a campground. Access is off three-eighty-five, and there is special flood hazard area on the property. The applicant is requesting a PUD overlay to expand the use of a legal non-conforming recreational resort by adding fifteen recreational vehicle spaces. During staff's review of the request, it was determined that the existing on-site wastewater treatment systems do not appear to be adequately sized for the current uses. Several existing park models on, are located on, within the boundaries of the special flood hazard area. And lastly, several existing park models do not have building permits. So, uh, the applicant is working with staff, but currently these issues need to be resolved before we can make a recommendation. So with that, staff recommends to continue planned unit development overlay twenty-three dash zero-six to the July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting.
Make as a motion.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I just had one question for Jason.
Mr. Roskodak.
So Jason, what are some of the measures that they're gonna have to take to bring that, uh, into compliance relative to the flood plane and those other items that you mentioned?
Right, so like I said, he is working with us, um, quite heavily, so we just need to kinda figure out what he's got hooked up. Uh, what the previous owner did before was kinda made some concessions with the Planning Department where he would disconnect certain buildings from the septic so that he had adequate sizing. Um, the new owner wasn't aware of that, so he reconnected those buildings, so he's, we're just more or less making sure that the systems aren't overloaded. Uh, as far as the park models within the flood plain, he needs to, we've already got elevation certificates, but he does need to secure those, kinda like a mobile home in a special flood hazard area with anchoring.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good, Jason. Next we come to item H. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item H is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash zero-nine, Pennington County, to amend section one oh-three definitions of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And Planning Commission did recommend to continue ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash zero-nine to the July fifth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, this item was not advertised property, properly in the Hill City prevailing. Um, they actually advertised the wrong item, um, so it has to be continued.
Moved by Drews.
So take.
Seconded by Laster to continue to the July fifth meeting. Any further discussion from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we've come to contested hearings. Item I, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item I is road construction of section line right-of-way, CS twenty-three dash zero-three. It's to construct a road within the section line right-of-way between section seven and eighteen in Township two N, Range eight E, to provide access to a property located in section seven. The applicant landowner is Yellowstone L and R Ranch LLC. Uh, they are proposing to construct a, um, an approach, and then the road will go outside of the section line and, uh, into a private access easement. Uh, but since this approach and this road is within the section line, they have to do this request, uh, and they are going to, um, construct it to ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of road construction of section line right-of-way, CS twenty-three dash zero-three with conditions.
So moved.
Moved by Haggar.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any public comment? Any further from the commission? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Jason.
Afternoon again, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director.
Item J.
Agenda item J is vacation of section line right-of-way, BS twenty-three dash zero-one. This item was previously heard and denied without prejudice at the April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. The applicants are Little Guys LLC, Ben Brink is the agent, and the other landowner is Holy Smoke Incorporated. Danielle Banks is the other landowner. The agent is KTM Design Solutions. Locations of the properties are two-four-one-two-five and two-four-one-zero-five, Highway sixteen A. They are zone planned unit development and highway service district respectively. Existing land use is the Powderhouse Lodge and Cabins and the Holy Smoke Resort. Access is off Highway sixteen A, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. The applicants are requesting to vacate approximately one thousand six hundred and forty feet of section line right-of-way. In September of two thousand and two, a portion of this section line was vacated on the Holy Smoke property. You'll see that on the map on the screen I identified in blue. Uh, what they're proposing to do is, uh, vacate in yellow on the Holy Smoke property and in green on the, uh, Powderhouse property. Uh, May twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three, the revised application was submitted for both property owners, and with that, staff recommends approval of vacation of section line twenty-three dash zero-one with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Did I hear correctly, you said it was denied without prejudice before?
It was. Uh, the original request, this portion in yellow wasn't included in that request, so that would have left that approximately seven hundred feet of, uh, section line kind of in limbo. Couldn't make access by the public, so it really served no purpose. So, uh...
Okay, that's what I was kinda wondering, like, I thought, remembered this, but that makes sense.
KTM approached that property owner and explained the situation, and they were happy to submit the application and amend it.
Mr. Chair.
I heard Mr. Drews first.
I think if I remember correctly, Jason, this was a situation where it was just not recognized as being the issue that it is at the time that they came in for the previous one, and this was caught after that. And so, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Roskin.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to pre- vacation of section line right-of-way VS 23-01 with one condition.
Moved by Roskin.
Sir.
Seconded by Drews. Any public comment? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we come to items K and I. Quite frankly, I've got several, this is similar to the motion we had earlier in the meeting, so I'm going to stick with, since both these are requesting a continuance on this item, but I will let you guys speak. I'm going to follow the same process we used with all the other speakers today's, which is two minutes because it is a continuation request. Normally on continuation requests, we don't take public comment or have discussions. So, but I will let you guys, you guys sat here through the whole day to give a brief explanation, and we've gotten several emails on this item too, so I don't want you to think that we're not trying to listen to you or anything, but I do have eight speaker requests for it.
Chairman, can I ask Brittany a question? So on October 5th, 2021, we agreed to this. We said that the developer needed to have a public meeting. Has that been held yet?
I am not aware of it, but Mr. Skoll will be here at the next meeting on July 5th. The reason he's asking for the continuance, because he could not be here to discuss some of the previous comments.
Well, I didn't know, because people were talking about that me and Travis also had voted for this. And usually on urban, I can just say that I usually don't agree with it, but I also, something different was proposed at this point, and also there was said from the developer that he would have a public meeting. So just food for thought. It would be nice to know before we have our next meeting if he has his public meeting, because that was one of the stipulations, I thought, of approval, at least I know for me, and I think Travis as well. I don't know if the other commissioners agreed with it after reading.
If you, if you go, Mr. Chair, if you go back and...
You done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
You go back and watch that meeting, you can see that we said we weren't going to hold him up, you know, and he said what he was going to do, and we said, okay, we'll approve it, so we don't hold you up for two months and then expect you to come back. And he had some specified information he said he was going to come back to us with. And so I went back and watched that in that meeting, and it looked like that's what we were agreeing to, is that we'd move forward with it, knowing that he was going to fulfill X, Y, and Z. So the October 5th meeting would be good review.
So Brittany, you can pass that on to the applicant.
Yes, I will let him know.
But this is a continuation request.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Drews.
I would, under the circumstances, I would take both K and L and make a motion that they be continued to the July 5th.
Second.
It was moved and seconded to continue K and L to the July 5th meeting. That's the motion on the floor, moved and seconded by Lassiter. We do have several speakers, and I, I'm, they're, we're patients, so I'm going to go through them real quick, but I will stick with the two-minute one, not try to shorten yet, but, because we've gotten plenty of comment, but to give you the opportunity to, so it'll be fresh in our minds for our next meeting. The first person I have is Annette Matt.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did Gary say K and L, or did he say J and K?
No, K and L.
Okay, I thought you said J and K. Sorry, Gary. Thank you, sorry.
Okay.
My name is Annette Matt, and I live at 3380 Colvin Street. My property is adjacent to this six acres. Now, as a background, I've been around this area for over 40 years, and that six acres has always been a watershed. We've always had water back there. And if they would, if they deemed that they've got to put in apartment buildings in there, it would be put right in the middle of a residential area with absolutely no access to the area. And so I'm totally opposed to them changing, trying to change this from suburban residential to urban residential.
Thank you.
That's all I have said.
Thank you, Ann. Next I have... Oh, okay, Linda Corden. The first, the first part looked like a U, so I was...
Sorry. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak. This matter is of high importance to our neighborhood. We have some water issues there, and we'll be glad to discuss a lot more of this at the July 5th meeting. There are issues with the ingress and egress for this proposed area. Our entire community is opposed to this. Many of us have taken three days now and carved out of our schedules, some working in the military, some working full-time jobs, others retired, working at home. To be here, our item is usually last on the agenda. This is the second time it's been continued because the developer first left because it was long meeting and now just can't be here. We would like you to recognize the importance for us in making this a priority, and would ask that this be dealt with as soon as possible.
Thank you, Linda, and that's why I'm giving you the opportunity to speak today. And we do get your emails and letters that you send to our office, goes into our packets for our commissioners to read. And I do know there's been a couple of site visits out there, so I just wanted to pass that on.
And I do think that a number of my neighbors are willing to forego their speaking time just by standing in support. I don't want to commit them to that, but I think that, you know, if you would ask if any of them just support the same thing without speaking, unless you would like them on record as well.
That would be wonderful. Is there, I've got two, four, six other speakers. We know you're all in opposition, so if you could stand, if you're in opposition to Murphy Ranch, so it's all of you in our audience today.
And I don't know if any of them still want to be on record, but this may cut someone off, so.
I'm willing to, I gave you the opportunity. Who's got the desire to speak? I've got each everyone's speaker request. Sir, what was your name?
Jim Hayward.
Jim, come on down. And then we had another hand raised, your... Okay, Sydney. And the rest of you are willing to forego, or do you, okay, go ahead.
Jim Hayward, 7860 Longview Road. After listening to the June 12th, 2023 Pennington County Planning Commission meeting regarding Murphy Ranch Comprehensive Amendment proposal, Randy Skoll of Pink Cabin LLC stated that he didn't know what they planned to build on the acreage that they're requesting to be changed from suburban to urban. I believe the commissioner was quite correct in not recommending the approval, probably based on the topography and future flooding issues. The project plan 21PL 034 submitted to Rapid City Planning back on January 18th, '22. Slide number four at the top of the map shows three buildings and a multitude of parking spaces around those buildings, suggesting that those buildings will be multifamily and multi-story units. Note that also has Springfield Extension written on it. According to the April 2023 Rapid Valley Sanitation District Meeting Minutes and the Springfield Extension Project, KTM Design is working on plans for multifamily units to the east of Colvin Street, which pretty much lines up with the property that's subject to this Comprehensive Amendment proposal. Additionally, the Rapid Valley Sanitation District May 2023 Minutes, they spoke of those two names as one. Also, Mrs. Skoll has stated at past BOC meetings, such as the October 5th, 2021 meeting, that he would build in Murphy Ranch comparable to the existing housing, area housing, such that it matched the overall feeling of the neighborhood and not degrade the area. In fact, he spoke about that twice, once in the 2-hour 37-minute timestamp, and again at the 2-hour 43-minute timestamp of that meeting. In conclusion, I don't understand how I vote to approve this proposal. Can be done in good conscience when the Planning Commission itself has already unanimously denied it.
Thank you, Jim. Sydney? Sydney Cox.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me. Sydney Cox, I live at 3677 Black Powder Road with my husband. Our property is right off the drainage area where they're proposing to build this. I appreciate you hearing me. I know you guys get all the emails and all the letters, the phone calls that we have turned in, and I just, you know, we sat here today, so I just wanted to make it sure that's clear to you, that we are adamantly opposed to this. Our whole neighborhood has signed a petition against this for more than one reason. The biggest issue that I see currently is the flooding. I brought it up last time. There's pictures, we have videos. He said he did a study, he, meaning Andy Skoll, said he did a study that has not been turned into county. So I'm pretty worried about that issue. Sometimes that water gets so high that it literally is in people's backyards. They said they've already spent money trying to fix it, and they've already done what they're going to do. It's not, it's not adequate. And I feel like if they just put concrete down in that area to do apartment buildings, it'll cause more flooding, and the neighbors will have issues with that. Again, he said the like, likelihood that he would build 16 units, then he says 72 units, back to 16 units. It just seems very disingenuous to me, and I just don't really appreciate that. If he could come with a plan of what he was going to do and stick to it, I think a lot of us would feel more comfortable, but it changes quite frequently, and it's not really appropriate. I also just feel that the flooding, I mean, I know I already talked on that, but it's a huge deal, and it's not only going to impact our neighborhood, but it's going to impact the rest of Rapid Valley with future plans. I know Ms. Hadcock had already touched on this at our previous planning and Mr. Lassiter as well, but he really needs to focus on what the impact of what he's going to do is, not just on us, but on the rest of the future of Rapid Valley and what's going to happen downstream from that.
Thank you, Sydney.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, and I appreciate the rest of you. Oh, you do, and you are, you are Donna?
Cindy Whitmore.
Cindy? Okay. Yes, Cindy, come on forward.
Cindy Whitmore, 3325 Remington Road in Murphy Ranch since 2005. The subject of whether Andrew Skoll has, or Pink Cabin, has contacted us and the community since that five October 2021 meeting. My husband and I have not had any contact until we got the certified letters for the 22 May Planning Commission meeting. I think the other resident, I haven't heard from any other residents that have heard anything from Pink Cabin or Andrew Skoll, so I think that's a key point. You specifically had talked to him about getting with the community, and you as well, from what I saw in the video, and he asked for two months, and it's, we're approaching, I guess, two years later, and we haven't, he hasn't reached out to us to discuss this at all. So I just wanted that for the record.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
The other three you waved, which is Robert Hook, Donna Peterson, and Brett Whitmore.
We'll put an A at the end of that, Robert.
I'm zero for 10 today. Okay. All right, well, we appreciate you guys waving it, and July 5th, the next meeting, and continue on. If you've got any further comments, you can email them to the managers, and she'll distribute them to us and put them into our packets and so forth. As I said earlier, I think there's been a couple of site visits and some, some big concern here, so your, your voice has been clear.
Chairman.
So, Ms. Hadcock.
Just a suggestion, went out there in full disclosure with Jason, Travis, Joe, and Sean from our highway department, superintendent and his assistant, like I always say that. What you need to look at is how it's being built out there, and I don't know if it's developer-driven or builder-driven, but you have dirt swales that are being filled in and flattened, and those swales of dirt, yeah, I did learn something, Jason, they're supposed to drain the dirt, or the dirt, the water into those holding ponds, and what's happening is it's flattening out and draining into the Murphy's ditch. So that's why you're having flooding, that's why you're having some of the things out there, is that water's not going where it's supposed to, because when they build out there, and maybe other developments, but this one specifically, the water is not going where it's supposed to because those areas have been filled in that are actually supposed to direct that water where it's supposed to go. So hopefully in the future, we, unfortunately, we don't have drainage inspectors and people that go and say, hey, developer or person building your house, don't flatten that, it's going to go into Murphy's ditch, you're not supposed to drain into the Murphy's. Long story short, just stuff for food for thought, for our commissioners to go look at. There's some other areas that probably Joe and Jason can point out if you want to take them out there, because Joe has an inlet in his backyard, and the only thing that drains in his inlet that's supposed to drain his whole development on that, like six, seven houses, maybe more than that, probably about 10 houses, is his. Everybody filled in their drainage areas, and he's the only one that uses that outlet. So again, some of that, I don't know how we hold them accountable, but it's not Pink Cabin, I don't think he built there before. I don't know if he built the second part, but just food for thought to look at and what we can do in the future to help that so it doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Deb. And I will pass on, we, you're going to bring up a meeting this morning? We did have a meeting this morning with Planning Commission, discussed and had discussion on drainage and some issues that were happening, so that did happen this morning. Just wanted to pass that on.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Drews.
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I still think that the valley residents need to get together. There's about 12,000 residents out there at this point in time. They need to get together and figure out their own development future, because as it sets now, we have multi-jurisdictional authorities out there of the city within the one-mile and the three-mile limit, Box Elder may even encroach on part of that too and be a part of that, and then you have the county. And so what you're doing is you're leaving it up to the valley residents, or really leaving it up to all these other governmental jurisdictions to figure out what that future's going to be. And as you see, we get lots of pressures to be, for development, for affordable housing, et cetera. And so I think, I think you have to be in control of your own future rather than having to go to the various government entities all the time, being in opposition to some things taking place. Thank you.
With that, we, the motion on the floors for continuous to the July 5th for items K and L. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, folks. Item 19, Interim Study Committee on County Funding Services Update. Who's doing that?
I think Holly probably has the most information on it.
Just for those people leaving, this is the next agenda on the item.
Yeah, Commissioners, I just wanted to put this on the agenda to bring it to your attention. They did have the first meeting last Wednesday, and I did listen to it online. We did make copies of all of the presentations and put them in your packets. There is a lot of really good information in there that talks about the counties and what our jurisdiction is and what our authorities are, and especially coming up with budget hearings next week. It will go through and tell you what authority you have for each responsibility, whether it's required, whether it's authorized, whether there's no authority. I think they've got some good ideas coming out already. There will be three more hearings. There'll be one in July in Pier, one in August in Rapid City, and September, the last meeting will be held in conjunction with the annual convention in Sioux Falls.
What's the date on the September one?
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Okay.
I believe. It's the last day of the convention, I believe.
Okay. Did anything stick out in...
I think it's actually the... It must be the 19th, because the convention ends on Tuesday, the 19th. It's 18th and 19th of September.
Yeah, we can get those dates confirmed for you. I was thinking it was Wednesday, the 20th, but I'm not sure.
No.
No, we're on a Monday, Tuesday now?
Yep.
Okay. So then it would be Tuesday, the 19th.
So Holly...
It can't be, because that's our board meeting day.
Well, we must have moved that, didn't we? Are going to move.
We'll double check.
We'll get that figured out.
Yes.
My question is, did anything in that, what you caught of this, that study, did anything stick out in your thoughts as far as listening to it, and some of the possibilities that you thought were interesting in one item?
The two that stick out in my mind was listening to the Auditor General, Russell Olson. He spoke about doing this, you know, he's been doing it for about 40 years, and a lot of the same issues existed way back then for counties. So to me, that was pretty surprising that someone would admit that, that counties are still having the same issues.
Forty years later.
They did say 17 counties are facing bankruptcy. That was a surprising number.
Seventeen?
Seventeen. They talked about consolidation of counties and how that could possibly look. Another one that stuck out to me was the ability of counties to charge an administration fee for all of the services that we provide to the other taxing entities. You know, that perception is still out there that the counties keep all the taxes.
Yeah.
Well, no, we collect the taxes for everybody, and then it... Well, no, we collect the taxes for everybody and then it gets apportioned out. So, being able to collect some sort of administration fee to be compensated for all of that work was something that they discussed as well, so that might be potential legislation that might come out of it to give the counties the authority to do that. TIPS were briefly discussed and how those affect counties, so maybe something with that, but the chair did say their intent is to have legislation by that September meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I might just add on to that, I had a conversation with one of the key legislators this morning in regard to that, and he indicated to me that he felt that there were probably going to be several bills that come out of this study committee that will be advanced forward, and so now it's a matter of massaging what those bills should say and what they need to be, and information is the thing that they're in dire need of, and I think Pennington County really came through and really provided, under Holly putting it together for us, I, I think we provided them probably the most comprehensive information that they can go by, even though some of the dollars certainly don't relate to some of the smaller counties, it, it still all relates, it's, it's a different, it's a smaller number, but everybody has the same, same issues. The other thing relative to the seventeen that are at the point of bankruptcy, there's nothing in law that allows a county to, to declare bankruptcy, and so somehow or another, they're going to have to continue to forge through until the legislature makes some sort of decisions here on funding for counties.
Thanks, Drew. Mr. Drews and Holly, appreciate that.
Definitely in those packets. Take a look at some of the pie charts, it's pretty eye-opening that, I think it was nine, eighty-two percent, ninety-two percent of what the counties spend their funding on is statutorily required. There is little to no discretionary funds in there, so.
Okay.
Important.
Thank you. Next, we move on to approval of the vouchers, we have a motion one, which we had Ms. Haggcock abstain.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Move to approve the vouchers for the Roseanne LLC in the amount of one thousand seventy dollars.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roskanek, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry, motion number two. Mr. Lassiter.
Move to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of two million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to items from Chair and Commission members. This is a time for individual members to bring forth any ideas or concerns that the full board, official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time, direction may be given to bring items back before the board for future consideration. Is there any Commissioners that want to speak on that? Seeing none?
Chairman. Just one. I talked to Annette today, and people have been talking about the lines, but one thing I forgot is we have live cam. Live cam shows what the lines are like, that way people, if they're coming in or if they have a lunch hour or something, that, that was a really good point, is that they could check to see where the line is at before they come here, just to make sure they can get in and out, and it's usually, I forgot what they said, fifteen minutes or more a person on average, so if you would look at that before you came, it's huge, and I never thought about that till just now, because I've been having a lot of complaints of people saying that the lines are long, but those titles, it's the title area, those titles take a long time to process, I watched Janet do them, so make sure your constituents look at the live cam before they come, that's a really good point that Annette brought up, so that way they can kind of see where the lines are the longest or the shortest, so they can come in at times appropriately, so.
And I'll piggyback on that, Ms. Haggcock, it's not, there's like compounding problems, is this year we're getting new plates too, so that line's not moving as fast, you know, they're having to put stickers on them, do a lot of that type of stuff, but you're absolutely right, most people would bypass, if they didn't have to get plates, would bypass that, go to the machines, but then there's a seven, there's a mailing fee, so then they choose to, so it's kind of a compounding, but I, I know I've let some of the residents know too, but.
And, and they also are down four people, so, you know, at this point, we have a lot of the different areas in Pennington County for staff that are down right now, and they're down four, so that needs to be in consideration as well, because Annette knows, goes, is like, let's find some solution, then, and the solution was, Deb, look at the cam, that's a good solution, because that makes it huge for people to be able to know when to come and different times that are slower, so, good job, Annette.
Mr. Drews?
Do you want me to report on my meeting this morning with legislators?
Yes, that, that'd be, this would be a good time.
I, I give just a short report, through, I think this was probably originally arranged through Senator Duhamel, the Appropriations Committee members from throughout the state were in Rapid City this morning, and they're going to be in, in the area for the next couple of days, in fact, we're here yesterday too, I think visited the Rapid City Airport yesterday. But through Hurst, she was able to make arrangements with Sheriff Mueller to give a tour for all of these legislators of the new pivot point, and to talk about the care campus, and to give a brief tour of the jail and some of our, talked about some of our needs that we have there with not only housing, but structural-wise, et cetera, and so forth. And so it was a great opportunity to spend a little bit of time with those legislators who are the key people as far as coming up with dollars for legislative action, and to kind of give them a briefing as to how the pivot point is operating, how the care campus operates, there was a number of those that had not had the opportunity to be here. And so I think the most critical thing is, is that, one of the points I tried to make is that, as part of statute, we are, we are required to take care of the poor and the indigent, and there's considerable costs that go along with that. But just doing programs of putting them in jail and then releasing them after several days, and not being able to deal with any of the effects on their lives, whether it be abuse of some kind, or mental illness, or whatever it may be, that being able to provide some programming which, to try to help with those people that are willing to adjust their lives, and to go through the programs and get treatment and education on it, that in the overall long run, it's a dollar savings. And I don't think there was anybody there that, that didn't recognize that at that point in time, was saying, really being complimentary on the programs that are being run through Pennington County to assist in, in those particular areas. So I think it was a great opportunity, I want to thank Senator Duhamel for making those arrangements, because this was something that was added into their schedule as they were coming out, so, but I think it was a very important time to be able to spend with individuals that really control a lot of the future funding for counties in South Dakota.
Thanks, Gary. With that, we'll move on to meetings and committee reports, and we'll start with Travis.
So, Weed and Pest Board, I didn't go because I was in surgery that day, however, I have been in a lot of other meetings, and I'll just kind of give a heads up on still monitoring the new Underwood Fire Department stuff down there post their election, and they're kind of working through some stuff, it's still choppy on some, in some issues, but I think they're working through it. I've been involved with the Wall ambulance and that study, waiting to, we had a preliminary report from that study, I think it's going to open our eyes to a different way of looking at things for the entire county, waiting for Jerome to get the final report that's coming from them, so we can sit there and have that, that conversation. I think all these small ambulance districts are going to, they give us a lot of good information, is what I'll put out there, but wait for the final report so that we can talk about that and, and see how we're going to move forward with all of the other ambulance districts and, and fire districts as well, because I think it gave us a lot of insight to what's going on. I'm heading to Pier tomorrow for the post audit, post-election audit committee with Monet Johnson, so next meeting I'll bring back information to that one, and then I'm heading to Wall tonight for that highway low maintenance meeting, that's a public meeting for, for all the roads out in the Wall area, Joe Miller will be out there as well, so I have a busy few days.
Thanks, thanks Travis, I'll go to Mr. Drews.
Okay, so on June twelfth, I was still out of town on vacation, so I didn't make it to the Library Board, I don't know if Commissioner Haggcock had the opportunity to be there or not. On June thirteenth, I attended the Building Committee meeting, Commissioner Roskanek and I were both in attendance, the primary discussion was potential revamping and dollar savings suggested by both the State's Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office. This involves the possibility of the State's Attorney's Office remaining in the Administration Building, which could provide considerable saving for office build-out in both the Administration Building and Public Safety Building. The discussion involved build-out of the nine-hundred concourse property, we saw more later designs on it, still not, not finalized. June fifteenth, Commissioner LaCroix and I attended the Transportation Executive Policy Committee, we approved the draft report of the twenty-four to twenty-seven transportation improvement plan, and approved the major street analysis for Rapid City. Mark Carlson was, was also in attendance with the state, and he reported that the reworking of Highway sixteen, Neck-Yilke intersection is scheduled for twenty-twenty-five. That's it.
Thanks, Gary. There's a reason I went left to right, is because then you just covered what I don't Air Quality Board, they, they're trying to regroup with the new director, and they canceled their meeting, and they got it scheduled for the end of this month, and they, I think it's like the twenty-seventh or something was the date, is they're going to try and do it, and I think they're looking for one at-large member, and I told them to conduct Holly, because they're looking for our area, so otherwise, they really, as many, they continued it on, and Gary did the MPO meeting, some of the other ones, I, we did have, I'm on the Community Relations Commission, we did have dinner for, and appreciation of, of the community at the Doll Center last month, I think everybody got the invite, that was a pretty good turnout, there was like fifty people, it was a really nice event to get to meet and greet and talk to a lot of people and give presentations, and of course, the same night was the U City Council, and I missed, I had to step out of their meeting when, when all the elections was going on for the new, for new president and vice president and stuff, to take a phone call, but it, they really, they really did the campaigning, there was like two people, three people that wanted the presidents, two for vice president, treasurer they wanted, there was three, so there was a big number, and so that was probably the first time that they've done that, or had that big of an interest in the leadership roles of the U City Council, so that was really good. With that, I think that was most of the need to update.
So, one of the meetings I went to last week, it was the master plan for county transportation, and I asked the gentleman, he said, well, we had one last night in Wall, and I said, well, what was your attendance in Wall? And he said, just the commissioner.
Yeah, just me.
Thank you, Travis.
I was there.
We actually had five at ours.
Congratulations.
Anyhow, you know.
I was here at the one that was here, and I, I and I think Joe.
Right.
And maybe a couple of staff.
Anyhow, I, everybody, it was, you know, it's a work in progress, but I just wanted to mention that I did attend, I, I thought there'd be more people there, and then when you talked about the ambulance districts and the, the problems that they're having currently, I noticed on the front page of the Rapid City Journal, Rapid City Journal doesn't print every day, no, they print every other day, so the front page of the Rapid City Journal, as far as on my electronic version, is a picture of the Hill City ambulance, and indicating that they're going to have an online auction, and that, you know, they're working on getting a permanent facility, which we've kind of discussed in the past, so I'm anxious to see, see that study, Travis, and see what we can do for the various ambulance districts in the county. Jim Goobles is the Mystic Ranger, he sent me an email, he said, basically, it was the results of the economic impact of tourism in South Dakota, and it breaks it out by Custer County, Fall River, Lawrence, Meade, and Pennington, and so when they look at the total revenue generated from the tourism sector, Custer, one hundred and twenty-four million, Fall River, forty million, Lawrence, five thirty-five, Meade, fifty-six million, Pennington, nine hundred and thirty-three million, so, I mean, we're really standing out in that, in that regard. I did go to the Weed and Pest, and I'm not real up on weeds and all that, but I, I, there is a, a new invasive plant that was discovered in the Black Hills region, it's called Vintoneta, Vintoneta, and so Scott's department's aware of it, it's not, I don't think you're going to see it so much right in the Black Hills, but you're going to find it up in the grasslands, but it's coming over from Wyoming and Montana, and I guess it, pretty, pretty invasive plant, what it does, it gets into your productive plants and reduces air productivity, so other than, other than that, we, they just went over, business as usual, and we had an update on the Black Hills National Forest Revision Plan. And let's see, Pennington County Council of Asia, we had our meeting at the Keystone Senior Citizen Center, which is the first time I've ever been in there, and so, you know, we focus on meals and transportation, and coming to Hill City, I don't know if this is, it's, it's called Prairie Hills Transit, they're based off of Spearfish, and they, and they're talking about doing services to Rapid City, to Keystone and Hill City, and they would be in the Hill City, Keystone, three days a week, and estimated cost on that is thirty thousand dollars, which I think the city of Hill City, when they do their budget hearings, they're going to be going to the city of Hill City for that, and I just wondered if that's something that Pennington County Council of Asia can participate in. We're just open for discussion right now, so that's just, we might have somebody from Prairie Hills come and explain exactly what their service would be, and if they, my guess is, if anything, just try it for one year, if it doesn't work, don't do it, if it works, and you've got public support, then maybe it's something that we want to look at on a more permanent basis. Building Committee, Gary touched base on that, one of the things that they did is they showed us a kind of a plan that BKV and TSP put together of how these different departments could lay out, and the idea was to use as many as the cubicles as possible, and the plan showed a lot of these departments with a lot of walled offices, which they said, if you go to the walled office, it's going to be a lot more expensive, because you've got thermostats, you've got electrical, you've got HVAC, it's just going to be a lot more expensive. So with that, I went up to Planning and Zoning, and I looked at all their walled offices and, and wanted to know what was in there and what the, you know, kind of the responsibilities of that particular individual, and so I showed Brittany that plan, she says, we didn't do that, well, it was, according to the presentation that I got, it sounded like the department said, we want all these cubicle, or walled offices, and Brittany said, we only wanted one area divided in the two walled offices and maybe a third, so there's a major communication gap there somewhere, because if we're going to try to keep the cost of that, or repurposing that building, we need to try to use as many cubicles as possible and not build a bunch of walled offices, that, I'm afraid if we do that, we're going to be a little, we're going to be surprised when we find out what that renovation cost is going to be, that's all I got.
Thanks, Ron, Deb.
I was on the Planning Commission, it went really fast till we hit the, the Roseanne There's a lot of debate on different stuff, for me, it was the drainage, and it's a moving target of kind of what's going to happen in that area. I did announce I was going to say no, but I also said I would look into the drainage and the other things to make sure it was factual about what I was thinking and what was going on there. Also was told it was five. Also was told there was 5-0 vote from us. But I also didn't review that tape ahead of time to see why I voted, or Travis, or Gary, or anybody voted for that to be urban. So a lot of it's because we don't really know. We just rezone, and then we figure out the rest later, which sometimes later causes some issues. So, long story short, I think we're supposed to have a community meeting, some other stuff. But they voted no and moved it forward to us. Central State's Fair, they're working on the fairgrounds for, with the vision funds. We are going to do a tour on the next meeting we have of the fairgrounds, just to see all the vision funds and the things that we've improved from those and from the increase of the taxes from, from the citizens as well. So just those impacts and what that makes the difference for, for the fairgrounds. And then the figure's coming up. So passes, make sure you get your passes that you need for those. Fair, tell Ron now, because those VIPs are going quick. I didn't know that those VIPs, about $350 each. That's, but if you figure out concerts anymore, there's a bunch of really good concerts. Concerts are like 100, 150 inch a person, just to go to one concert, among all the stuff that they're having, the Derby and all the stuff. So it's well worth the money you're going to pay for what you get at the fairgrounds for those prices. So it also helps the fairgrounds move forward on the things they need to do as well and improve some of those areas at the fairgrounds. So they got a really good group there. And then I'm on the task force, and I'm having Shannon work on some of the areas that we need to look at for that task force for moving forward on what's the future of the fairground kind of stuff. And maybe it's not moving it, maybe it's keeping it there and doing something different. I don't know at this point. Just doing investigations on a few different areas of the financials and what the fairgrounds is worth and some of those other areas, just to get some information.
Mister Chair.
You done?
When Commissioner Hickok's done, I've got.
Go ahead.
Jerome is here. He can give a quick overview, if y'all would like, for the preliminary report from the Wall ambulance district, if you'd like just a quick.
Did you want that now or at the next meeting?
Not on the agenda. That'd be on the agenda.
It's informational. It's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, really should be on the agenda, but he's going to give a report.
It needs to be on the agenda so other people can.
You just want to get a quick update from when you come to us.
Jerome Harvey, Pennington County Administrator. We did get a meet with the vendor in the district the other day. District continues to move forward. As soon as we have the report, we'll get it on the agenda and share it with everyone.
Thank you.
Mister Chair.
We do have an executive, one short executive session.
I got a, I got a phone call the other day from Leo Hamm. And he said, he just got done watching that summer study in Pierre. And he says, who's the, who's that Commissioner and the Senator? And I said, well, that's Randy Dibbert. And he says, what's his telephone? You know, I said, I got his phone number. And he says, well, I'm going to give him a call. And so a half hour later, Leo calls me back. And he said, he's a very interesting individual. And so him and Randy, you know, they evidently had a really productive conversation.
That's good.
I didn't share that though, because Leo always asks me, he says, what's the difference between the city and county government? And, you know, four years ago, he asked me that. I really didn't know. And I said, the city may and the county shall. And he was pretty amazed that I could remember that.
He asks that to every Commissioner that starts this thing. And I answered, right? Because so when I said, if you get to Leo Hamm, do the may shall, and then you answered his question.
We do have an executive session. I'd look for a motion to.
No move.
Second?
Moved and second, moved by Drews, seconded by Lester, to go into executive session for SDCL 125-2 Personnel Matters and SDLCL Contact Show Matters. All in favor, say aye.
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 Wait for Joan. There she goes. Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved, seconded to come out of executive session. Moved by Lester, seconded by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
No move.
Second?
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Word, Chair.